As a matter of fact, I just recorded the most recent one, my Reno Yankees band. It was bootlegged actually, and I gave the mayor her own autographed copy of it. It's got some pretty up and walking good music on it. Anyway, I'm glad that I've been reading that book. I'm feeling good about supposedly being the new Sam Dene, and I'm going to try to work that way, but don't expect it to work all the way because I'm coming up to public comment in a few moments. And there is one thing, I'm sorry, there's one thing I will never stop castigating, and you know, anybody want to even guess what it is? The media mouses, they deserve castigation more than anybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Thanks for the gift, too. I look forward to listening to it.
Madam Mayor, we have no further public comment today.
All right, seeing that there is no more public comment, I will hand it over to City Manager Bill Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Today, we have a meeting that's jointly held between the City Council and Development Agency, and this is the start of our budget process. It probably goes without saying, but I will say it, of all the things that the council does, this is the process that's most impactful in terms of how it affects people in the community. It is also the most complex, and as you all know, and you will know again this year, there's a lot of tough choices that need to be made. Those choices will result in consequences to individuals and groups, and it is the challenge that we face. I would like to thank Robert and his team for starting this process a little earlier to allow the council more time to deliberate and understand the consequences of the decisions that you're going to have to make. Today, we're asking you to take the presentation under advisement, consider the information we present to you today, and then shortly, we'll be back to you with some kind of the first rounds of decisions that you will make from the policy level, not necessarily the dollar level or the employee determinations on numbers of employees, things like that. It's really more the big picture, like where, what do you want to accomplish as the city council? So with that, I will let Robert get going.
All right. Good afternoon. Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration for the Record.
Madam Mayor. Point of order. Thank you.
All right, before we move on, we have to actually go to item A4. So that would be approval of the agenda. May I get a motion, please? I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I apologize, I jumped ahead of myself. Robert Chisel, again, Director of Finance and Administration, and I'd like to introduce your budget professionals that help work on your team, Jill Olson and Trish Sebastian, you all probably remember, but we also have two new members that just started yesterday, Vicky Van Buren, I'm sorry, I stumbled on my words, and Stella Yang, both have joined the budget team, and as of course everyone remembers Gala. So with that, what we're going to do is kind of quickly go through the presentation. There we go. The agenda, what we're going to kind of go through is to go through the FY16 budget, the FY17 update, go through a strategic plan refresher, then presentation of where we are on those FY17 goals and the FY18 priorities and goals as broken out into groups. We kind of combined the supportive groups and then broke out our larger departments, our police, fire, community development, parks, recreation, and public works. This is based on the strategic plan that you and the council adopted on April 29th. And as Mr. Thomas mentioned, this is a little bit different than what we have done in years past. The finance department decided to modify the process for the development of this fiscal year 18 budget. As you know, the city manager each year proposes a balanced budget and a capital improvement program to the mayor and council for approval. The finance department is responsible for developing and monitoring the city's budget, carrying out budget-related functions, and overseeing the fiscal policy and financial planning of the city. The intent of these changes was to meet the needs of what you, the mayor and council, have directed us to do, is to get greater input from you and from the public earlier in the process so that we could do a better job of developing the budget that meets the needs of the public and the mayor and council. So that's kind of what we're going to do, but then after this meeting, we're going to go into probably in November, after we get your input back from you as to your priorities, present them back to you during a normal meeting where we will get, you know, you can adopt those or make changes to them. In March, we are going to come back to you also with an update of where we are with fiscal year 17, and kind of give you an update of where we are in developing the FY18 budget. And then in April and the May timeframe, we'll bring back that normal budget
I performed over a thousand concerts over the last fifteen years. Gilead Tropical Lee. Uh, as a matter of fact, I just recorded the most recent one, my Reno Yankees Band. It was bootlegged actually, and I gave the mayor her own autographed copy of it. It's got some pretty up and walking good music on it. Uh, anyway, I'm glad that I've been reading that book. I'm feeling, um, I'm feeling good about supposedly being the new Sam Dene, and I'm gonna try to work that way, but don't expect it to work all the way because I'm coming up to public comment in a few moments. And there is one thing, I'm sorry, there's one thing I will never stop castigating, and you know, anybody want to even guess what it is? The media mouses, they deserve castigation more than anybody. Thank you.
Thanks, Sam. Thanks for the gift, too. I look forward to listening to it.
Madam Mayor, we have no further public comment today.
All right, seeing that there is no more public comment, I will hand it over to City Manager Bill Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Mayor and council members. Today, we have a meeting that's jointly held between the City Council and Development Agency, and this is the start of our budget process. It probably goes without saying, but I will say it, of all the things that the council does, this is the process that's most impactful in terms of how it affects people in the community. It is also the most complex, and as you all know, and you will know again this year, there's a lot of tough choices that need to be made. Those choices will result in consequences to individuals and groups, and it is the challenge that we face. I would like to thank Robert and his team for starting this process a little earlier to allow the council more time to deliberate and understand the consequences of the decisions that you're gonna have to make. Today, we're asking you to, um, to take the presentation under advisement, consider the information we present to you today, and then shortly, we'll be back to you with some kind of the first rounds of decisions that you will make from the policy level, not necessarily the dollar level or the employee determinations on numbers of employees, things like that. It's really more the big picture, like where, what do you want to accomplish as the city council? So with that, I will let Robert get going.
All right, good afternoon. Robert Chisel, Director of Finance and Administration, for the record.
Madam Mayor. Point of order. Thank you.
All right, before we move on, we have to actually go to item A4. So that would be approval of the agenda. May I get a motion, please?
I'm a second.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye. All those opposed, motion carries unanimously.
I apologize, I jumped ahead of myself. Robert Chisel, again, Director of Finance and Administration, and I'd like to introduce your budget professionals that help work on your team, Jill Olson and Trish Sebastian, you all probably remember, but we also have two new members that just started yesterday, Vicky Van Buren, I'm sorry, I stumbled on my words, and Stella Yang, both have joined the budget team, and as of course everyone remembers Gala. So with that, what we're going to do is kind of quickly go through, uh, the presentation. There we go. The agenda, what we're gonna kind of go through is to go through the FY16 budget, the FY17 update, go through a strategic plan refresher, then presentation of where we are on those FY17 goals and the FY18 priorities and goals as broken out into groups. We kind of combined the supportive groups and then broke out our larger departments, our police, fire, community development, parks, recreation, and public works. This is based on the strategic plan that you and the council adopted on April 29th. And as Mr. Thomas mentioned, this is a little bit different than what we have done in years past. The finance department decided to modify the process for the development of this fiscal year 18 budget. As you know, the city manager each year proposes a balanced budget and a capital improvement program to the mayor and council for approval. The finance department is responsible for developing and monitoring the city's budget, carrying out budget-related functions, and overseeing the fiscal policy and financial planning of the city. The intent of these changes was to meet the needs of what you, the mayor and council, have directed us to do, is to get greater input from you and from the public earlier in the process so that we could do a better job of developing the budget that meets the needs of the public and the mayor and council. So that's kind of what we're going to do, but then after this meeting, we're gonna go into probably in November, after we get your input back from you as to your priorities, present them back to you during a normal meeting where we will get, you know, you can adopt those or make changes to them. In March, we are going to come back to you also with an update of where we are with fiscal year 17, and kind of give you an update of where we are in developing the FY18 budget. And then in April and the May timeframe, we'll bring back that normal budget workshop that you're more used to seeing. So by the time you see that workshop, you'll be probably sick of seeing us, but it is, as Mr. Thomas says, a very important part of the city government is the budget, so of course, yeah.
May I ask you a question? Do you have this scheduled laid out somewhere, or is this later part of your presentation?
Uh, yes, it should have been in a memo to council, but I will redraft a memo and send it out to everyone.
That would be great, just so we know what the milestones are, we can kind of put them on our calendar, that'd be great.
We'll do that. And so here's kind of that timeline I was speaking of, but I will put it in a memo and kind of go through.
Or if we have this, this works, I didn't, I didn't know.
Yeah, well, a little more detail, we'll provide a little more detail to you. So, so first off, starting with FY16, where we were for FY16, we are in the process of being audited by our external auditors, so the numbers are unaudited at this time. We don't anticipate any major changes in these numbers, but they are unaudited until the CAFR is complete, probably in December, they will be unaudited numbers. As you can see, the revenues kind of came in right about where the amended budget was, about $150,000 off from $188 million budget. So.
That's kind of some prediction there.
Well, it, as we say, even a blind squirrel finds an acorn once in a while, but, so it is pretty much online where the revenues were. There was no additional revenue that we forecasted that came in above. As you notice, a couple of the items were below, such as fees, licenses, and permits. Intergovernmental, of course, is down a little bit, and then special assessments was down a little. And, but it was made up very well with the expenditures for FY16. Again, the departments did a great job of holding the line on their budgets. Salaries, wages, and benefits were under budget, services and supplies were well under budget, capital outlay was slightly over budget. That left us with $5.4 million in additional ending fund balance. However, most of that ending fund balance is being carried forward into this year. There will be an 8% ending fund balance for fiscal year 16 approximately for the general fund, which is just about where we would like it to be. Ideally, long-term, as we work out of the recession, we would like to get it up higher so that we're better prepared to weather the next recession.
Uh, Madam Mayor, if I may, did that 5.4 get built into the budget as a number in and of itself?
Uh, the 5.4 million was not quite identified in the budget. We'll be bringing back some augmentations.
Augmentations, okay.
Next month. One of the things we, there is, you know, as you know, there's a number of projects that don't get finished in one year and carry forward into the next year. An example would be the master plan. You know, that was funded, it wasn't all expended in FY16, so that money will be carried forward into FY17. There was also replenishment of some of the $10.9 million surplus that was swept per the last manager. We had swept some of the excess money to balance the budget. We have reinstated that, so that will be part of the augmentation to be swept in, so we'll reinstate the 10.9 million as was originally approved by council.
Okay.
So those were some of the numbers that were brought forward, and, you know, so there was some adjustments that, normally in the end of the fiscal year, you will have a number of adjustments, so.
When are you gonna bring that augmentation to us?
Uh, is it, I believe it's the first meeting in November.
Okay, so two meetings from now?
Oh, the big one.
Oh, the augmentation will, I'm sorry, the augmentation will be January.
The big one, okay.
Because of the CAFR, yeah, that's right, we have to, I'm sorry, I forgot, gotta wait for the CAFR.
Yep, um, quick question. I am a little bit concerned about what you just said, so just as a, a moment in time, so we had 10.9 million, we allocated it to various projects, and I guess you're saying, let's say we put some money aside for the police station, one and a half million, or, and it wasn't getting spent, so you're saying it was used to balance a budget, but now it's been replaced?
Correct.
Okay, so everything is as it was when we approved the 10.9.
Yes, when the budget was approved, we were under direction to sweep some of the funds from the police station, from the fire station, from the elevator, to be used to balance the budget. Fortunately, because the expenditures came in well under budget, we were able to replenish those numbers.
Okay, good to know.
Yeah.
That's great to know.
Um, would it be helpful if we refrain from questions until you are finished?
Either way, whether, yeah, I'm at your disposal.
I think we should, let's.
We can block it into.
Yes.
Okay.
Madam Mayor, I can suggest maybe what to do, I mean, we have this first sort of high-level budget picture about where we are on projections, maybe once we're done with that set of slides, do some questions, and then when we get the overview of each individual agency area, we can just approve it up.
Well, and that really is it for FY16. We are right on target, we believe. You know, it's, it's looking good. We were able to replenish the 10.9. There are no outstanding holes that we're seeing in the budget. So for FY17, again, it's very difficult at this early stage because of the, the flow of revenues into the city. For instance, property tax comes in four chunks. A lot of people pay most of their property tax in whole in the first chunk, so usually the, that August payment is the largest, which as you can see, 30% has been collected. Sea tax, the other source of our major revenue, that is two months behind, so it's right on target for one month of sea tax, but it's not enough to really gain any kind of sight as to where we are, where we're going in the economy. Looking in the economy in general, and for this year and into the future, you know, most economists are looking at about a 2% growth rate, which would probably put us right on a fairly flat to slight increase in most of our revenues and expenditures, so it, it's a lot depends probably on the election and other items, but we're not seeing any major problems right now with the revenue, but it's still very early to say. Expenditures, kind of the same thing, we're very early in the year. We're about 25% of the year done, and salaries and wages, as you would expect, are, since they're fairly regular, are about 25%. So we're right along where we would expect to be at this time of the year. We're not seeing any concerns or any worries in either the expenditures or revenues, but we're also not seeing any excess numbers at this time. So that kind of completes that chunk of the numbers before Mr. Hei gets up here and talks about the strategic plan.
All right, any questions from council?
Where are we at on that fines and forfeiture study that we were doing? I noticed that fines and forfeiture were off about a half, or no, 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 it was fees and licenses were off about a half million.
Yeah, we are going to be done hopefully in December. We're finalizing the fee study right now, so it will be built into the FY18 budget.
Okay, what, before, will we see it on a side note at a council meeting, you know what it is, rather than just at the budget?
Yeah, we will bring you the information, either to the council or in a memo form.
Okay, thank you.
For the record, my name is Ryan Hei, Strategic Conditions Manager for the city of Reno. The purpose of my section in today's workshop is to provide a refresh of the strategic plan. Getting started, let's see, here. This first slide here is to help recap the relationship with the strategic plan to that of the master plan and illustrate its distinction. As you can see, the strategic plan, which is more of an internal roadmap specific to the organization, is but one of many plans influenced by the master plan. While some of the master plan raw data and public input has been used in the creation of the strategic plan, once the master plan is finalized, is expected that more and more aspects of it will merge into the strategic plan as well as into other plans. The important part for purposes of today is that the strategic plan is separate from the master plan, and the strategic plan's purpose is internally focused as to the operational strategy of the city as an organization. Moving to the next slide, this is a summary of four of the five elements of the current In London, in the London Business School article, "Translating Strategy into Results", teaching fellow Rebecca Homke states, "Strategy is about making choices. It should end with a simple story that tells us where we as an organization are going to play or compete, and how we are going to win or succeed, while being clear on the top challenges that we face along the way." The plan that you as a council adopted on April 29th has done exactly that. It tells a story. Starting at the top, you adopted the vision, "We are a vibrant university town known for our outdoor activities, special events, arts and culture, and innovative industries." This statement contains many of the requirements of a good vision statement. It's inspirational, it's short, it's clear, it's definitive, and it's inclusionary. You should notice that most of the concepts in this statement are a reflection of the master plan, public participation process. This vision is a shared vision, a collaborative result of council, staff, and the public. And this is important because as stated in the Harvard Business Review article, "To Lead, Create a Shared Vision," the author states, "Constituents want visions of the future that reflect their own aspirations. They want to hear how their dreams will come true and their hopes will be fulfilled." To that end, the statement, "We are a vibrant university town known for our outdoor activities, special events, arts and culture, and innovative industries," creates a shared vision, applicable to both the city as an organization and the city as a whole. Moving on to mission, the statement that resounded with council since the beginning is, "Creating a community that people are proud to call home." The power and beauty in this statement is its universality and meaning, and both can be tied to the word proud. Whether you are in public works or public safety, parks or planning, employees and departments throughout the city of Reno are motivated to do work and offer services that they are proud of. Creating a community proud to call home, tying pride into the mission statement creates a sense of personal meaning of ownership, almost as if each of the 1,200 employees working at the city are saying, "I'm going to be proud of the work I perform in creating this community." And as the authors in the Harvard Business Review article, "To Give Your Employees Meaning, Start with Mission," state, "When people take ownership of work, they are more committed to it, more intrinsically motivated, more engaged." So after reviewing an aspirational vision statement that promotes a shared context, and a mission statement that promotes personal meaning and ownership, I'm going to review our five strategic priorities. Returning to the article, "Translating Strategy into Results," and talking about strategies generally, Ms. Homke asks, "The most critical element is then saying, 'What are we going to do? What are the top priorities over the next few years, the few aspects that we are going to be focused the majority of our effort on?'" Well, we've answered that here at the city of Reno with our five strategic priorities: thriving downtown and university district, vibrant neighborhoods and public places, well-managed growth, strong financial condition, and efficient and dependable business environment. While these five strategic priorities are broad by design, they become more specific when tied to their respective goals. The goal for thriving downtown and university district is, create an environment that attracts residents, students, businesses, and visitors. The goal for vibrant neighborhoods and public places is, ensure a safe community and will maintain public infrastructure. The goal for well-managed growth does need one edit on this slide. I inadvertently missed the word sustainability in this goal, so it should read, assures policies, services, and infrastructure that are sustainable and support anticipated growth. The goal for strong financial condition is, prioritize resources and align revenues and expenditures while maintaining appropriate reserve levels. And lastly, the goal for efficient and dependable business environment is, provide predictable, efficient, and timely processes with appropriate fees and charges. Adding one more level of specificity to the plan are the 37 departmental and cross-departmental initiatives that you're about to hear about today from departments. These initiatives are tangible actions of the city leading to focus and achievement of the goals, which in turn promotes focus and achievement of the strategic priorities, which ultimately will lead to the achievement of the vision. And speaking about initiatives today, you will hear departments discuss how some initiatives will be completed by next fiscal year, some will be ongoing, and how some will be new. You may also hear departments speak about the time, energy, and resources needed for initiatives, which leads me to conclude my portion of today with one more quote from Ms. Homke's article, "Translating Strategy in the Results." Execution is about focusing time, energy, and resources on the few things which will do the most create, which will do the most to create value and take your organization to a different, better place. As you hear from departments today, have faith in the plan that you adopted, use it to make choices, and think about how you'd like to best allocate resources on the few things that will take the city of Reno to a different, better place. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Actually, Madam Clerk, if, or, do you want to ask any questions? No, any questions, council? No, okay, seeing that there are none, I'm actually gonna go into a quick public comment.
Oh, okay.
Okay, thanks so much.
Madam Mayor, Sam Dene would like to speak on this item.
Go right ahead.
Sam Dene, the encyclopedia of Reno government, the DNA, heart, soul, body, and mind of Reno government. I've been to every city council meeting since 1994, and I've learned a few things. I've learned that this budget, watching this budget is probably almost as exciting as, as, anyway, a Reno Yankee band concert, not. At any rate, I just have a couple of little things that might be a little bit outside of the box that I'd like to throw in here. Number one, relative to the, relative to the amount of money being spent on this search for a new city manager, I don't want to take any away, anything away from that company over there or that young man, but I have to say this, I watched the previous process of searching for a city manager about four years ago, and they brought in five or six different people, and the city council, the other city council did not select any of those people, and then so around about $80,000 or $100,000 kind of went down the drain, and then he went along, and you finally brought in Andrew, Andrew the abracadabra man, Klinger, to, to be the city manager. But anyway, what I'm saying is that, I've watched Bill Thomas here, by the way, he's the only person in the entire Reno government who has seniority over Sam. He's the only person who was on the premises when I arrived many years ago, and he's been inside of government, yeah, that's true, it's true, Ms. Mayor. He was the, I forgot, he was in community, whatever it was. Anyway, he's been in government, out of government, in government, out of government, so he's seen both sides of this operation for the many years, and he didn't pay me to say this, but I would just say maybe you could make an amendment to the budget and just go ahead. You have my nomination, I nominated the, the fire chief, I nominated the police chief, they're doing a great job, although I don't quite get the number of, the amount of thanks I should be getting from the, even from them or their counterparts, but I'm used to not getting thanks, so don't worry about it. At any rate, the other thing I want to talk about is on the fees and licenses, and I'm, this is outside of the box, this is outside of the box, and the fees and licenses, what we have is a, nobody thinks like this, the Reno Gazette is a taxpayer-funded operation. They've got this thing called Legals in the newspaper that bring in hun, dozens of millions of dollars to them, and the, the budget manager's looking at me, oh yeah, that's true, they bring in, they somehow get hundred, dozens of millions of dollars paying for those Legals, and they are a monopoly. Why don't you take a look at those Legals in the newspaper, day after day, they take up a lot of space, the Legals is where you go out and, and you have to put things out on the, on the, for people to read when you're going bankrupt or selling some properties or whatever. Those Legals bring in massive amounts of money to the Reno Gazette. Why don't you put that out to bid, and I guarantee you, you can find somebody who'll do it not only cheaper, more, more efficiently, but more honestly? So that's my suggestion for the budget for today, probably worth $25 million.
All right, thank you, Sam.
Madam Mayor, I have no further public comment.
All right, thank you very much. Okay.
Proposed department initiatives, and what we're gonna do is first off, kind of go through, as I had mentioned earlier, kind of the support services departments that had items in the strategic plan as one of their initiatives, as holders of one of the initiatives, also, so we'll be going through where the staff. Also, so we'll be going through where the statuses for FY17, but also going through any proposed initiatives for fiscal year 18 that would be discussed. So first is going to be for the finance and information technology areas, and all these slides are going to be fairly similar. They're going to start with the strategic priority that was, as Ryan was talking about, the strategic priorities that were adopted by the council, the strategic initiative that supported that priority, the status, the target for FY17. And if you see a budget priority in FY18 over there that says yes, that means it's something that we're going to have to prioritize the funding and the budget level for fiscal year 18 for. And at the end of this presentation, I will tell you how we're going to go about trying to get the priority schedule from the council and the mayor to identify what we are going to budget for for next year. So just kind of giving you an overview of what we're going to do. First off, for thriving downtown and university district was to increase availability of high-speed broadband. That initiative is in progress. We have put out an RFP. In fact, we just had our pre-bid conference meeting yesterday with over 20 people coming to get additional information. We're hoping to have an idea of what direction will go in January, and depending on the results of the proposals, that may become a budget item to implement Giga City down in the downtown, midtown area is what we're putting the RFP out for. Another item is maintain other post-employment benefits. That is to maintain a strong financial condition. There is an item that we have done tremendous progress on, but it's going to need planning for into the future. As you know, you adopted a plan, this council adopted a plan for 40% of the growth of property tax would be funded to pay down the liability of the OPEB. And I'd like to commend the council for what they have done. You guys have been the first council to create a trust for OPEB liability. You were the first council to two-tier the benefits with all the labor groups. And the funding, we have $4.6 million of OPEB funded today. We're going to fund almost a half a million dollars this year, so that liability has been going down. That liability was $226 million two years ago. It is now $185 million. So you made tremendous improvement in there, but it's something we need to continue to do. Strengthen the stabilization fund. There's $2.1 million in there. The idea is to continue to redirect any leftover contingency in there. That's our rainy day fund. Here's that comprehensive fee and rate study, and that has been awarded. That will be done in December, and results from the study will be implemented, but there is not a budget impact beyond what we, what is adopted will be impacting the FY18 budget. Yep.
Go right ahead.
Okay. Just a couple of quick questions. Um, the, what is our role with the, um, the high-speed broadband? So this is where I'm just, just to narrow down my question. Generally, you know, private companies are installing various things to improve their internet capability. Uverse came to my neighborhood not that long ago, for example. So what exactly is our role with this?
Our role in this is, we as a city cannot be in the place of a utility.
Right.
We cannot be a telco, so we cannot be a telco, but what we can do is encourage private businesses to come in and increase the availability. We have Charter, we have AT&amp;T, Uverse, there are wireless versions out there. There are also a number of other fiber providers that come through town and provide service, whether it's Puma Sierra, Inno Networks.
Right. But what is the, the RFP is our money. We're going out with a request for proposals to do a something. So what is that?
We are doing a pilot project.
Okay.
We had identified the area of the downtown, midtown area, and, you know, we're not saying we're going to be pledging money.
Okay.
What we would like to do is encourage the telcos to come in and provide services for the businesses and residents in the area.
Right, but do we have to give them an incentive? I mean, that's where I'm trying to get at, the money issue.
Well, it depends, well, it depends on what the bids come back. Talking, in our talking to a number of these providers, some of them said they would like to propose a 3P, a public-private partnership.
Okay.
Some of them would just like to have access to, you know, our signal conduit. Some of them would like to just have, you know, be able to do microchannishing in our alleyways. So depending on how they come back with their proposals, we're going to analyze them and then we'll come back and say. But the idea is to encourage, you know, broadband in the downtown, midtown area.
Right, I guess what I'm trying to get at, is this like a monopoly franchise? Like the RFP, we would pick one provider and then we would work with them?
Yes.
Or could it be multiple providers?
It may be multiple, but it's probably likely going to be one.
Okay.
Provider to work with them to encourage. It's not like they're going to, you know, Charter, AT&amp;T, others will still be able to provide services if they have the fiber in that area or if they have that ability.
But just one would be done with us?
One would be done with us to help encourage the development of broadband.
Okay.
Particularly with the switch development.
I got it.
And, you know, so they would have.
I was confused with the competition in the, in the marketplace.
Yeah.
How this exactly would work, that we would just team with one, but I'm kind of getting it.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Madam Mayor, if I may? Yeah, I mean, I think it's just, you know, we have our revenues and expenditures, but we also have other assets, and our right-of-ways are one of our assets, and that's what this is, and, you know, it's fine, I think.
Yeah.
It's a strategic, links up to the strategic plan. I have one question about the fees and licenses study. Is there going to be a public participatory opportunity, maybe once the draft is done, that it will be outside of a council meeting? I just, you know, we license so many people, I just like a, I would like a workshop of some sort so that the public can have some input, some proposals, some vetting. I don't know if that was built into that project design or not.
Well, Pert Nevada revised statutes, our fees have to be for the cost of providing those services. So that's what the study is doing to make sure that what we're charging aligns with what it costs us to provide that. It is something we could look at as to having, particularly if there's radical changes, I could see why we would want to reach out to that business group.
I would find it helpful from my perspective, whether I'm talking to bar owners or, I don't know, grocery, people who have grocery carts that we end up, you know, retrieving. I'd just like a vetting of it publicly and explaining that concept. So as, you know, as that moves through the process. The other question I have is.
Remember, business licenses are a tax, not a fee.
Yeah.
So, okay.
So, okay, yeah. And then, I'm going to ask this of all departments, is there any way that we look at these priorities of maximizing any other regional revenues that some of our other regional partners may have? Okay, so we have a bunch of joint power agreements, we're partner up with a bunch of different organizations that get taxpayer money to, you know, provide local government services. Is there anything in here that we see that?
There is a discussion about enhanced collaboration, and I would point out to the council that if there is something that you see that you'd like us to prioritize that doesn't meet up with the strategic priority or the strategic initiative, this was what was adopted in April of this year. We, when we go to collect the information from you, we're going to ask for kind of a free form from you if there are additional items that you would like to see as an initiative as a priority as we develop it.
Okay.
So.
And that wasn't, did you write a memo that there's some, something hanging over our heads about some, something, I think it's up at the Public Safety Center, some, some emergency response?
Oh, the radio system?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, our public safety radio system, our land mobile radio system is really at the end of its life, and we, we work with the Washoe County Regional Communication System, which actually runs the radio system for Washoe County. All public entities are on that shared system. It's been a very successful system. It is also, state of Nevada, through the Nevada Department of Transportation, also runs the state's radio system. They're interlinked with each other, so we're all tied together. NDOT is in the process of putting out an RFP to replace their radio system. So depending on what happens with that, the, we may, we'll have to change our radio system at some point. Depending on how those things come in, there may be a, there will be a cost. What that cost is, we don't know. We're, whether it's in FY18, it's probably not likely, it's probably in the following year.
Okay.
But it will be a rather sizable cost to the city. Okay.
Madam Mayor, if I can, just quickly in terms of process, there will be many things, I think, similar to the radio system, which are fundamental investments that have to be made to maintain our service. What we're really trying to do today is focus on things that might be initiatives that would be in addition to or beyond. Obviously, when it's all said and done, whatever money we have is going to have to be balanced between maintaining our systems and new things we're going to do, but really, the purpose of today was try to get you focused on strategic things that we might want to do either differently or enhance as we move forward. So not that existing infrastructure isn't critical, because we do have to do that, but that's why you won't see things necessarily like maintaining the radio system in the conversation today.
And now, really quick, Madam Mayor, sorry to jump in. Mr. Sisobut, thank you. Quick question, the strength in stabilization fund. I think this is going back to a few comments that are made earlier. When would we use a stabilization fund?
The stabilization fund is protected by Nevada revised statutes. It could be used in case of an emergency, if an emergency is declared.
Okay.
Or in the case where revenues are in decline, in which case you could then tap them. And the intent of it is to be a rainy day fund so that.
In addition to that stabilization fund, we have another fund that we set aside money as well, is that not right?
No, there's the stabilization fund, which has 2.1 million in it. It's sometimes referred to as a rainy day fund. We have, in the general fund, about, as I said, 8% ending fund balance, which gives us about 30 days' supply.
Okay.
So those are the two sources to weather the recession.
We have a contingency.
Yeah, I thought we had a contingency fund.
Well, each year, we budget a contingency of, so that if there is something that comes up in the year that we're not anticipating, that will be used. And that, intent of that contingency is it will roll over into the stabilization fund at the end of the year if it is not used.
So the reason I ask that question is because of the comments that you made earlier about the sweeping of funds. I know that we approve funds that come before us once they hit a $50,000 mark, correct?
Correct.
And so with the sweeping of funds that you had suggested earlier, how does one sweep funds from fund to fund without that coming before us as a body for those funds to be moved or to be spent?
It was built into the budget.
So you guys are able, my, the reason I ask this is, if we as a council put aside priorities and say, certain funds need to be spent for certain things, but then are we saying that you guys can decide to move that as needed?
We were directed by the manager to sweep those funds to balance the budget. Those budgets were swept, those items, and obviously, we became, realized in budget that, or the council had not been made aware of that, so that's why we worked to replenish it.
So moving forward then, do we still, I would do some my understanding, you've made those corrections.
We will make those.
So funds can no longer be moved from one to the other in order to clear up that gap? And is, was this, and so the city manager has the authority, it's just concerning to me hearing that, kind of, we can sweep funds if need be, if we, as a council and as a mayor prioritized certain things to be funded and they can be moved that way?
Concerns us too.
Okay.
Well, he's bringing up a point of process, is how much mobility within the budget during a budget year do we give administratively? And we've had that discussion, and we've given a lot of administrative authority. So if we want to have a discussion on parameters of administrative authority during the budget year, you know, let's put that aside during this long conversation and get there.
Okay, so you have a few different, and then I'm sorry to move on, I'll move on, Madam Mayor. So we have the contingency fund, we have a stabilization fund, we have other means, but we decided to sweep because we're that far beyond a revenue to play in those.
At the end of last year, it was, to try to balance this year, we were looking for, you know, balancing the budget. And the idea to use the 10.9 unused portion came up. It was directed to do that. We did that as part of the budget, and then it became aware to us in finance that council was not aware of it, so we worked to put it back in.
I have a question.
And the contingency for last year had been used up, so there was no contingency left in last year's budget.
So a more normal process might be going forward, just to build on this comment, that if you're going to sweep from fund to fund, which is a capital fund, I think, the 10.9 million. And it may have been swept over to operating fund or, or general fund. I mean, that, to me, you don't do that, you would need to bring that back to council or we.
That is correct.
We should have a policy on that at a minimum, if people don't understand it. So I appreciate that, that you've highlighted to us and you've made the corrections, and we just, I think at the policy level, we need to make sure that the rules are understood. I mean, in all the budgeting I've ever done, I haven't seen sweeping from a capital fund into a general fund without the approval of the council.
Yep.
Okay.
You're correct. Couple proposed department initiatives from finance and IT is debt reduction. As you all know, we're down to $492 million in debt as of June 30th. We're hoping to reduce that again by five and a half percent by the end of this year. And then again, overall improvement in financial condition. One of the things we're pointing out is what Councilmember Delgado was talking about is the ending fund balance. Currently, it's about 8%. Ideally, we would like, that's a 30-day supply, which provides cash flow ideally in preparation of the next downturn, we would like to get closer to 16% fund balance so that we can weather those downturns. All right? For city managers, strategic initiatives for this current year, we have, for a number of items for thriving downtown and university district. One is to evaluate and begin the implementation of the ULI recommendations as appropriate. The intent is to present that to you this year, and depending on how that comes out as recommendations, there will be a budget priority in fiscal year 18. Another item is to complete the downtown action plan, which you're all well aware of, which is ongoing with the Puma Group. The hope is to have that completed, the plan in place for this year, with no budget impact for next year. Continue to establish special event programming and activate public spaces. The intent is to look at increasing that. We're pretty much full, as I would, I think Alexis Hill has done an amazing job on getting all those special events programmed. There's a lot of those, but there is a budget impact for next year. Then continue to engage stakeholders in related downtown initiatives. That's ongoing, that's more outreach, and so there is no budget impact for that. For vibrant neighborhoods and public places, continue neighborhood advisory boards. The intent is to increase the number of Facebook members, increase the number of development project reviews, and maximize the use of the NABS, take more stuff to them, work with them more, and there is no foreseeable impact for the FY18 budget. Continue to emphasize arts and culture programming, looking at increasing the number of collaboration projects from 10 to 20. Their city manager is not indicating any budget impact for next year. Complete sustainability action plan, and based on how that action plan is completed, there will be a budget impact for next year to implement that. Enhance collaboration with regional partners regarding education, water, transportation, sewer, stormwater, flood, energy, waste, and public safety. This kind of goes into what Councilmember Brekis was talking about, and looking at enhancing the number of partners and collaboration. Again, more outreach, but no budget priority for next year. Develop public service facilities and infrastructures plans that include revenue and expenditure forecast, benchmark current service levels, and there may be a budget impact for that.
Can I, a question on that one? This page. Robert, on the well-managed growth that you just mentioned, you said there's no budget impact, but I think it's not just collaboration. I mean, I think we were looking at making sure that the water, the transportation, the sewer, stormwater, flooding. sewer, stormwater, flooding, some of these are looked at in our permit process today, and some are not. For example, water for development is handled over by Tomo in a different process. And we've had many questions over the year, two years, last two years, about, how do you make sure there's enough water? And we go, we're relying on Tomo. But I guess what I was envisioning this process would look like is that we would get some kind of a certification from the school board that it's going to be okay, from Tomo that they've got it covered, from, you know, if it's a... We don't even have a stormwater utility, but Public Works, that they're managing the stormwater or not. From public safety, you know, weighing in from police, fire, not just, oh, yeah, we can break through this gate, or we can get there, but what is this new development adding in terms of demand for services? So, I don't think that this is just a collaboration issue, and I guess this is really a direction to bill as we go through the budget. This may be a process, like an MOU, where all these agencies we're relying on, from RTC to water to whoever, have a role in our process to give us the comfort level that we need to move forward with the development. And this was under an L item that was assigned to me a long time ago, but it was actually almost every single person at this council asked for a version of this, so it was actually moved to a more general, you know, citywide initiative. And I know if Paul was here, he'd probably speak to it as well. So, I guess when you're going through the budget, I'd like you guys to think about, what can we do to do a better job on this issue besides just more talking? Like, is there a check form, a weighing in, you know, a something? So, I don't know what it is. I'm not saying I know what it is. I'm just suggesting we... To do a better job, I don't think we just say, "Staff, go collaborate." I think we, you know, we have to have our planning departments talking with these other regional agencies and thinking up a new process.
Part of what you'll see here in this document, and as we move forward, is general statements. So, I think what you just described is a better definition of what enhanced means.
Right. So, I'm just saying...
I understand what you're saying.
It says no budget impact, but there might be a budget impact.
There might very well be.
For... That's all... I'm just flagging it, that, you know, if we're really serious about doing a better job, that we probably have to put some money to it.
Okay. Still in the city manager's office, under strong financial condition, pursue property tax reform. You've heard many things about the cap, and the depreciation is eroding our property tax revenue. And so, the intent is to target to pass legislation. It is no... Not applicable, but it will have an impact in that hopefully, if something is done, it will improve the stability of our revenue source for property tax, but it is not intended to cost us anything, is that's why it's not applicable. Also, actively sell surplus property to reduce debt. That is an ongoing initiative. And then, under efficient and dependable business environment, is establish a customer service and satisfaction survey. And the intent there is to have that survey done by this year, and so there would not be an impact for next year.
I guess I'll ask one question, is taking off on my colleague's comments, is the growth piece, which, you know, obviously, our focus is big on the master plan. Frankly, I think the master plan's moving a little slower than we'd like, but, you know, we've had discussions during the year. When do we keep things in the manager's office? The manager's office kept growing. And when do we, you know, farm those off to departments? And I wonder if it's time to talk about the growth piece being a concentrated focus of the community development department's long-range planning division that involves master plan implementation and those companion pieces that we can start to see and look at there. So, that's something I'm going to be looking at. And in that, and the ULI, you know, we never got that study. I hear it referenced all the time around the community, but I've never even seen a draft of it. And I guess, you know, talk about what regional resources, a lot of it seemed infrastructure, transportation-related. So, where's that plan? And is it getting programmed by our colleagues at the RTC? Are we using those regional resources in any manner?
So, our plan would be, Madam Mayor, if I can, to answer that.
Go right ahead.
Our plan would be to... I don't have a specific date, but to get back to you with the recommendations of ULI, which varied pretty widely, widely, in terms of what they were, some of them being very significant, public expenditures on roadways and issues like that. So, we do need to bring back to council that report for council to prioritize what amongst those many recommendations are things you want to proceed on. So, we have that in the queue to bring to you before we get to completion of the budget.
Yeah, because if 90% is a transportation-infrastructure discussion, let's have it in that vein. You know, if 10% is an economic development plan, I'm just...
And part of the reason we're doing it the way we're doing it is because, you know, obviously, this is very fluid, and things come up, and things wane in terms of their importance. So, the reason this is on here generally is to get a sense, as the council prioritizes how, for example, the ULI study bears out. Now, obviously, you'll need detail so you can make that decision, what are the elements of ULI that are important, more important than some other things you might spend your time and energy on. So, we hear what you're saying, and we will get you more detail before you have to make the choices on funding.
Okay. And then, some proposed department initiatives from the city manager's office for fiscal year 18. Under Thriving Downtown and University District, allocate resources to implement Downtown Action Plan and ULI recommendations, as we talked about. Well-managed growth, we have allocate resources to support communications to constituents, connecting the community, improving that connection between the community and the city and the council. Vibrant neighborhoods and public places, allocate additional resources to program public spaces and events, and expand public arts programs. I didn't say that because I can't say sesquennteño. Yeah. I can't say it. Well-managed growth, allocate the resources to implement Sustainability Action Plan. And well-managed growth is develop public services, facilities, infrastructure plan that include revenue and expenditure forecast. And that's probably one of the larger items that really is going to be driving us as we grow into the future, and how that ties together.
Go right ahead. I would encourage council to just jump in and ask your question.
Okay, thank you. And I am assuming this is what I think it is, and I think that this speaks to a comment that Councilwoman Brekis just made. I can see that last effort, develop public services, facilities, and infrastructure plan that include revenue and expenditure forecast. This involves, is going to involve some collaboration with regional planning, I would assume, and their discussion and their bringing together all the information ahead of their regional plan update, where that's kind of a bigger-picture discussion that we need to have as a community, and certainly, Councilwoman Brekis has been on this point for quite some time. And so, this is that whole effort to kind of put facts out there rather than opinions.
Yeah, well, and it sounds a lot easier than it's going to be, but putting arms...
Oh, yeah, yeah. It's massive.
Trying to at least maybe corral the information, would be a better way to say.
Right, okay. So that we can have informed discussions. Great.
I have a question on this page. So, Tomo Retreat is this week. I think it's tomorrow. And one of the things they gave us in advance of the retreat was, I'm just pulling it up here, was an assessment of their customer satisfaction survey. And just generally, they... Their customers are very, very satisfied. But one of the things that came up in their report, I have it right here, is that many of the items are up at the, like, 94%. People are happy, happy. But one of the things that people weren't as happy about, and I've already talked to the Tomo director about, is the public input into the water decisions. They don't feel, the public doesn't feel, like they know enough about it. And while they're very, very happy overall, and here it is right here, 9.4 is, do they have a great adequate water supply? Absolutely. But does the public input in decisions reflecting, you know, is it 10% or more decline? In fact, about 15, maybe a 15% decline. So, my question to you on this page is, where we have well-managed growth, and we talk about connecting the community, the constituents, to the council and the city, I think, and this is Mark over at Tomo is going to make this a priority as well, is how... What are some better ways to communicate? And one of the things he and I talked about was having an annual kind of water summit where everybody can come in and talk about the water for the future and all of this, where we're engaging the public, not just their usual PR, but some, like, special day, where people look forward to it, and they come and participate. So, it's just, I just wanted to... I was wondering what this item meant in terms of well-managed growth. It's not about communications per se, it's about communications about the growth. And Mark himself said that most of the questions that they're getting over at Tomo are people are concerned that there's not enough water for the growth. Even if Tomo projections show there is, that message, you know, isn't linked with the public perceptions here, and they believe from the hydrology perspective, the realities here. And so, I just wondered, is that what this is about, or what is this?
Well, I don't believe it's specific to water, but it's the idea is to communicate...
Growth.
I mean, one of the biggest items, as you know, that affects the city is development.
Yeah.
That's... And so, that communication is important between the constituents and the community and you, the council. So, how can we do a better job? And there may be additional resources to do that.
Got it. Okay. Well, I'm pleased to see it. I just wanted to say I'm seeing it in different places, you know, at different agencies and regional issues.
As we, as a community and a nation, get more connected, we expect more information.
Right.
You know, and since we demand more, we want more, and we... It just kind of...
It'll be interesting. I'm looking forward to see what the proposals.
Okay. All right. That kind of completes the miscellaneous departments. Next up is police, then we're going to have our fire department, community development, parks, and public works come up and kind of go through their initiatives for FY17 and their proposed initiatives for FY18, and then we'll all be back.
All right. Thank you so much. Before we start, Madam Clerk, any public comment?
Madam Mayor, I have no public comment.
All right, great. Thank you so much.
Good afternoon. Chief Jason Soto with the Reno Police Department. And if I could get to the next slide, I can kind of go over some of that information, and see if we can change that. Oh, right here. There we go. FY1617, our strategic initiatives. For the Reno Police Department was Thriving Downtown and University District. Develop more robust community policing initiative. And funding for the downtown walking team was approved. That's how we achieved some of the interaction that we wanted within our downtown community. That walking team has since been staffed in October of 2016. The priority for 1718 was to expand coverage. Getting into 1718, our proposed strategic priorities are vibrant neighborhoods, improve traffic and DUI enforcement. Obviously, within our community, there's been a lot of focus on pedestrian fatalities, traffic control. That's one of our priorities for the Reno Police Department. We have since addressed some of that. We've added one additional DUI officer to our DUI officer team, which is what we promised our community that we would do. That went into place last month, and it is working, it's effective. However, there's still a lot more work to be done there. Enhance neighborhood patrols. One of the big concerns that we get from our community and our citizens is that they want to see more visible presence of their police department in their neighborhoods. And then, finally, for well-managed growth, addressing our aging infrastructure. We've begun to do some improvements to the Reno Police Department. However, the building was put up in 1947, and there's a lot of challenges yearly when it comes to the Reno Police Department. Now, there's a couple of things that I feel the need, that I have to point out. It's my responsibility to point out to this council when it comes to our situation within the city of Reno. I want to thank the mayor and the council for their focus on public safety. I know it's just as important to them as it is to us at the Reno Police Department. In 2014, we had 304 sworn officers with the Reno Police Department. Today, we have 317. So, it's a positive direction. It's added 13 bodies. However, in a recent study, the United States Bureau of Justice Statistics, BGS, indicates that in a city, western, in the western United States, with populations between 100,000 and 249,999, the average police agency is situated at 1.7 officers per 1,000 residents. Reno Police Department is at about 1.3 per 1,000 residents. That doesn't mean that we don't focus most of our department on patrol. We realize that when we had the downturn and the recession in the economy, that we had to challenge ourselves to find a way to safely police this community, which we've done. We've kept our patrol numbers pretty strong. However, we are hurting within the building. To give you an example, cities of like size, as I stated, Reno, Nevada, we have about 1.3 for 1,000 residents. The average calls for service for an officer in 2013 is 509. For Tempe, Arizona, there's 2.0 for every 1,000 residents, and they average 431. Las Vegas, 1.7 for every 1,000. They average 182 calls for service. Henderson, Nevada, 1.2 for every 1,000. They answer 307 calls for service. So, it just gives you an idea of how hard your Reno Police Department is out there working and responding from call to call. These men and women go out there every single day. They start their shift, and they start responding to calls for service. Often, they don't get their lunch break. They work from the start of shift to the end of shift. And it's important that I point out how important it is for our community to recognize, as you've stated, Mayor, and every single person sitting up there, how important public safety is to the city of Reno. But I wanted to give you an idea of where we're at today. So, we are currently funded for 317 positions right now. 22 of those positions are in the academy. So, right now, we have 295-ish officers patrolling 110 square miles of 250,000 people. It's extremely challenging. They do a fantastic job at what they do, and we appreciate all of the effort of the mayor and this council, and we appreciate the cooperation, certainly, within our community.
All right. Thank you so much. Numbers don't lie, and those are extremely telling. So, I want to ask you this. The other thing that concerns me is the resources that you have available, because the dynamic is changing so much. I mean, now we talk about, you know, police departments probably had no idea that in today's age, that we would be dealing with terrorism. You're dealing with terrorism at levels. And then, mental illness and drug addiction and things like that. And I see your officers out there, and I am so amazed how compassionate and hardworking they are. It's incredible. But I also see that they don't have some of the resources that I think are critical components of having at their fingertips and having for citizens. So, is there also something that you think is absolutely must? Because I... Here's what scares me. A lot of departments get up here, and I know you all do it. You get up here, and you get pretty conservative, because we've all been hearing this message over and over and over again about our financial situation. However, I think we also have to be very cognizant that we cannot compromise some of the critical components that we need to provide our citizens. And first and foremost, for me, and you guys know this, I will probably sound like a broken record, but I will be very vocal to this council how important the police department is. A safe city is a prosperous city. And now more than ever, it's a very severe situation with how we are growing, and it's great that we're growing, and we're seeing great economic development, but I think at the same time, we are doing everyone a disservice if we do not make this a priority. So, I need to hear from you in all honesty and truthfulness, because I'm not doing what we did last year in budget. I refuse to go that route. So, this year, I want a very open, candid conversation on exactly what it is you need. And we have to also pay attention to the fact that, you know, then there's attrition that happens, right? So, then we kind of start to try to play catch-up again. And so, I want to make sure that, you know, people are not being too conservative on really what it is that the ask is.
Okay. Thank you for the question. I'll be very open and very candid. We need more police officers. And yes, police officers today are asked to do much more than what we used to be able or we used to be asked to do. Mental health is another area where we're very challenged at recognizing and addressing that. We have done some things as a Reno... We have done some things as the Reno Police Department to assist us in that. We've regionalized some units, used resources from whether it be Washoe County Sheriff's Office, Sparks Police Department. We've collaborated with the MOST team and some mental health, social workers. Certainly, there aren't enough. But as I gave you those numbers, we have one point three officers for every one thousand citizens. We have to patrol a hundred and ten square miles, seven days a week, twenty-four hours a day, three hundred and sixty-five days a year, and we have three shifts to do that in, swing shift, graveyard and day shift. That is a very, very difficult task with the amount of personnel that we don't have. We've also done some other things to help our patrol division. We've hired a couple of additional CSOs that will handle non-priority calls for service. We've since reestablished our front desk to take non-priority calls for service. However, as this council has experienced in the past, oftentimes, we see an issue within the community. We'll use resources, we'll borrow resources from one area and put them into another area. But then the area in which we borrow them suffers from.
Right.
Lack of presence.
Borrowing from Peter to pay Paul.
Yes. So we definitely need more police officers sworn for the city of Reno. That's being honest.
I think the MOST team is incredibly critical and I will tell you, the motel interdiction team is, it was really, really instrumental.
Yes, when we lost, when we had the downturn and the recession, I should say, a lot of different types of units, we just had to shut down, if you will, and move those resources, as I stated, to patrol. Because we had to keep patrol, which is the backbone of our police department, strong because that's what the community needs to be safe. So our patrol, we kept those numbers somewhat consistent. The challenge was all the other units that we, we had to see go by the wayside simply because we didn't have the bodies to fill them.
What scares me is I think it's one of those areas where it's sort of out of sight, out of mind, and then when something happens to you and you need a police officer, that's where you really understand the magnitude. And again, I don't know. Have you guys been on a ride-along downtown? A downtown ride-along? Councilwoman Breckus, have you been?
No, I haven't been on a downtown ride-along. What were our numbers prior to the recession?
I really, I really just want to stress that to every council member.
Do you want?
I would love for you guys to go on a downtown ride-along. Because that's very different from other parts of the city. And all the other parts of the city are very important as well, but there are different issues that you face downtown versus that you do in another part of the city. And so I just think that it gives you such a big perspective on, you know, talking about mental illness and the MOST team and the motel interdiction team. And so I think those are completely critical components. But go ahead, Councilwoman Breckus, I think it's a great question.
What were, what was the number prior to all the?
Three hundred and eighty-three.
It was three eighty-three?
Correct. And as I stated, today, we're at about.
Three seventeen?
No, we're at three seventeen, but keep in mind, twenty-two of them are in the academy. So it's probably going to be about six to eight months before they're on the road. So you're looking at about two ninety-five.
Yeah, right now.
So.
So we're still down almost a hundred.
Correct.
But of the three eighty-three, were any in the academy? I mean, are we not doing?
Some of them, but it was, it was a different time. Yeah, it was a different time.
Perspective of, though, that would be going back to late nineteen seventy levels? What are we talking about?
Our current levels, yes, it would go back quite some time since we've had two hundred and ninety sworn personnel for the city of Reno.
So I hope that's a wake-up call because it's not acceptable.
This is why this is so important to do right now. Well, I mean, this conversation now, while we all have time to get ahead of this budget process, so when it comes in May, we're good, you know?
I am sensitive to every department within this city. I truly am. And I know that we all have our challenges with the personnel that we have. And I think that every single department within the city does a fantastic job at managing what they have in front of them. It is a struggle, it is a challenge for all of us. But I also appreciate the council and the mayor's focus on public safety.
But I would agree with that. I will say one thing I love about the team here at the city. Every department has been super sensitive about the prioritizing. I mean, they all want certain things. If we could wave our magic wand, we would do it, but they all want certain things, but they always say, but I also know that this is important and this is important. So you're exactly right. And I think that's always a challenge and that's why I say I think people get conservative. But I think, like Councilwoman Durst said, it's probably, you know, these conversations are really, really critical and I'm glad we're doing it this way. So I really commend Robert Chisel and being very instrumental in that because like I said, I'm not going to find myself like I did in the last budget.
All right, any further questions? Councilwoman Delgado.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. To go onto some of your points, I know, Chief, when there's issues that arise in some of the neighborhoods and the CEO teams have gone in and you've had to move chess pieces across the city in order to deal with certain issues during certain times. But you also touched on the fact that sworn, the mayor's done this as well, sworn officers are not what they once were. They're, they're wearing many different hats. Do you find that we need to, in terms of your recruitment, when you guys are out recruiting, are you recruiting social workers to be sworn officers? Are you retraining your, your police officers to be social workers? Are you working, are we finding time, budget to, to hire mental health, behavioral health specialists to ride along that may not be sworn officers and find that that may be a cost savings overall to your, your department and budget? Because we know it's so multifaceted in terms of how they connect with the community.
Yes, to answer your question in short, but I'll give you a little bit more of an in-depth answer. In regards to training our officers, we now have required training in the academy and we're also rolling out training to the entire organization to recognize mental health when they see it. That's a, that's a lot of training in and of itself. So that's part of it. In the recruitment, I know that you're aware that we have gone in a new direction on how we recruit for the Reno Police Department to bring in all areas of our community and make it maybe appealing to them to get a job within the Reno Police Department. As for professionals, bringing in professionals, the MOST team does bring some in. I know that I'm currently on a committee within the city and we're looking at additional resources and additional money, maybe part of what Councilwoman Breckus was talking about, a shared expense, community expense for some of these professional, professionals to be working alongside our, our officers because they are very instrumental and very good at working with not only the individuals, but the families and having access to resources that we might not have as Reno Police Department.
Thank you.
So just a quick follow-up. This is such an interesting question. I mean, so are you actually recruiting someone that is, didn't come through criminal justice and school that might have come through mental health or are they being an adjunct to the police department or how is this?
We're recruiting everybody. We're going to schools and colleges and really looking for anybody that would be interested in this type of work and.
Because they wouldn't normally, a mental health, I mean, my dad was a psychologist. He wouldn't have said, you know, I think I'll go work for the police department.
Well, what's interesting about that is when it comes to mental health and somebody that has an interest in that, there's not a whole lot of professions that will give them more exposure outside of being one of those professional, you know, social workers type. So you certainly have a lot of exposure to it through police work.
It's very interesting.
The only thing I do want to mention, because I want to bring it up so that the council keeps it at the forefront of their mind, is also the downtown police presence. I commend you greatly for bringing in a walk team. How long has it been since we've had a walk team?
Just a few weeks.
No, but before that, because you had one.
Oh, it's been years.
Many, many years.
Been years.
And the feedback that I've gotten from that team has been tremendous and it's actually come from tourists. And it's interesting to sort of watch, here are these police officers and they're sort of selling our city and greeting them and saying hello and it's, it's been extremely beneficial. Many of the residents are noticing it and so I'm really, really proud of that. But I also know that we need to expand on that. And I also wanted to commend you because I think you also think outside of the box in the fact that, you know, we're looking at putting in, you know, probably through the RSCVA and other avenues that are tourism-related, ambassador type of teams and they become very recognizable downtown. And so it kind of helps people realize there's more eyeballs down there. And so you've been working with them and I think that that is important to sort of think a little bit differently, but also making it important to add more to that walk team because it's not seven days a week and I don't know what the hours are, but I want to tell you, the feedback that I'm getting is tremendous. And any city that I've been in, certainly downtown, there's always a pretty strong police presence and I think that that is probably long overdue and so I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Another quick question on this, if you don't mind. So this is very in the public eye, the walk team. Out of the public eye is the people that are staffing the station, right? Taking the reports, but it is where a lot of public interfaces with the police. And we had this conversation, I think, the last two years, is how do we get to staffing in that office? You know, whether it's save people, volunteers, whatever, to manage the calls. And the adjunct to that is when people send in an electronic request through the internet, how do we finish that piece where they send it and it automatically loads into a database? And it's a multi-year project, I get it. So the two things I'm wondering, staffing and then the improvement in the reporting.
So we are getting much more proficient in both those areas. Right now, we just recently launched our new police service specialist, which work the front desks. And that's for the customer service aspect of Reno Police Department. They take in walk-in reports and they take in internet reports and things of that nature. Our internet reports were a huge challenge simply because we didn't have the personnel to process them. We now have this group that's processing them. Once this group is up to speed, they're in the training phase right now, we're going to expand the seven-day-a-week coverage at the Reno Police Department. Our goal is, at some point, to add some more personnel to those numbers so we can staff our, our substation as well. That was one of your questions and I'm sorry.
Yeah, and the other one, well, they just kind of went together. One was just getting more bodies there to interface with the public. This is one of the biggest, bigger complaints that I hear is that no one was there. I filed an electronic report, which is the second part of my question, but it went into deep space. I didn't get any feedback that anybody's working on it or they even received it. And you were going to work on, I think, those electronic linkages.
Yeah, and I'd be happy to share with you those statistics, but they've improved greatly. Now, keep in mind, this has only been a few weeks since we've had these positions. But our internet reports are nearly done. And that's a huge relief, probably not only to the community, but we want, it was a priority to the department as well.
Right, then you get, I mean, I've gotten so many.
Oh, without a doubt.
David too, yeah.
Without a doubt.
Okay, thank you.
No question.
All right, anything else? No? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. All right, Madam Clerk, just going to keep checking in with you. Do you have any public comment?
Madam Mayor, I have no comment at this time.
Okay.
Next up is our fabulous fire department.
Nothing wrong with an introduction like that, right?
Right.
Dave Cockburn, Reno Fire Chief, for the record.
Before you start, I just want to say you did a wonderful job this last week. Last week was hard.
Yes, it was.
I mean, all over. It was hard. It wasn't just, it was all over. And so I know how hard you guys worked and, I mean, and you kept us informed and it was a very, very volatile situation and clearly, I mean, some homes and just, I mean, your heart goes out to those.
Incredible, and I'll tell you, just, I was up there this morning with Councilwoman Bobson, actually, and we went from the fire that you all saw pictures and videos of and how dramatic that was to flooding and.
Right.
You know, damage from that in just a matter of days.
Yeah, one extreme to the other and you kind of think, okay, we're going to get a break with some of this, with the water. And then it turns, you know, to that. So, but I just want to thank all the hard work you guys put in. I know that it was incredibly trying and also, you know, just being available for other agencies makes such a tremendous difference, so.
Well, I appreciate that and I appreciate you thanking me, but.
All right, thank all your men.
As we know, the people who.
And women, when you get back.
The men and women who are actually.
Matter of fact, there's one right here.
That's right. So I do my part, but I'd like to say that the people who are actually doing the work are out there.
Anyway, go right ahead, but I do want to let you know, thank you, we all appreciate it.
Well, and to kind of tie into that comment, so strategic priority here in vibrant neighborhoods and public places and our initiative is to continue to provide paramedic-level ALS service. One of the things that this has really allowed us to do is to be innovative in the fire service, the fire department here in Reno. We started that service in January of this year. We've now branched out into some other areas. We've got flexible staffing, as you know, we've got all the stations open with two-person crews, some of them come the first of the year, those two-person crews are going to be ALS. That's when those are new paramedics, we're going to have enough staffing to hit the streets and make those rigs ALS. We have a, what do I want to say? Innovative unit out on the fire right now. We've called it a rapid extrication module, which is an ALS ambulance combined with a brush truck with tactical rescue expertise. Again, that staffing level, those additional services we're providing are allowing us to innovate. We've also put ambulances out on wildland fires so that they have not just, and I don't want to mean, you know, not just a paramedic, it's a firefighter, paramedic. And for the people on the line, that makes a huge difference. These are all byproducts of the ALS service that we're now providing and we're going to continue to work to expand that. Some of the proposed initiatives, I talked about the ALS and I want to jump down a little bit to the third one there. Because of those innovations that we've been encouraged and enabled to make, we have a plan for additional paramedic units. There's some marginal cost for equipment, we're going to need some additional monitors and things like that, but by and large, those paramedic units that we're going to add are going to come through staffing that we have from the paramedics that we have already hired. And then going back to the top of that list, the increased staffing levels to ensure all fire stations are fully staffed. You've heard some talk about the staffing of the police department and I empathize with them as well. They, you know, we're, again, you've heard it before, citywide, we're in that boat. Our staffing levels right now are about identical to what we were in the year two thousand. We had two hundred and fifty-five FTEs in two thousand, we have two hundred and fifty-four now. You've seen some of the examples of how important that staffing, how important it is to maintain that staffing level, what a difference it makes when you have the people there to respond to the calls, be there, that depth of resources we have, it makes a difference, there's just no question. We saw that firsthand with the fire that we just experienced. One of the points I want to make, and you've heard me say it, but I just want to emphasize it for your consideration, for your policy decisions, we added ten new positions, not this current budget cycle, but the one before. So those are now online. We didn't add any in the current cycle, but we did have some over-hires. Heard the mayor comment that we don't want to continue that practice. I would encourage you to do so because we have a normal attrition rate as well, a normal steady attrition rate. We lose a dozen people a year. So if we don't hire a dozen, hiring a dozen people is not adding anybody. And over-hires creates a connotation, right? We're just, you know, as somebody said to me this morning, you're bailing water out of a leaky boat, you know? The boat's still filling up, but you're, you're not really making progress. So hiring twelve people a year is going to keep us a level. And I just bring that up because that over-hire term, while it's accurate, it also kind of creates a connotation that we're adding extra and we're not really adding extra, we're just treading water. Those new positions and with the over-hires have allowed us to keep all, or to get all the stations open, as you're aware, which is a fantastic thing. And of course, again, another byproduct of that is what I know I've experienced and I think you all have experienced out in the community is the positive feedback, the positive reflection that is made on the department and the city. And I just encourage you to continue that over-hire process and of course, to continue the policy decision to work toward full staffing for the department. Looking at the next proposed initiative, develop and implement a multi-year plan for infrastructure replacement, including fire stations and apparatus. A lot of this is not new, it's repairing, replacing what we have. We have a couple of fire stations, stations four and five, they're in desperate need of repair, if not complete replacement. if not complete replacement. Stations 1 and 21 are technically temporary stations. We have the lease on Station 21, which is the one at GSR, the Grand City Resort, that's going to come up in February 2018. These are not new ideas. I've been working with city managers. We're looking forward and planning on what we're going to need and what direction we're going to go. So I would just encourage you, again, to consider this in your policy decisions when you look at the budget. Because not just those stations, look at the apparatus. Right now, 16 engines of those engines, eight have exceeded their useful life. And that's a useful life of 10 years plus five years in reserve status. You know, we have engines that are, well, we just retired a couple. They're almost 40 years old. They should be replaced at 15 years. A steady replacement program, I understand, again, we don't, we're not, it's not realistic to think that we're going to replace 10 engines or 12 engines right away. But if we get into a program, a routine, where we're replacing a couple a year, that would solve the problem. And I propose to plan for that. And we can revisit that as we work through this budget process to get that back on track. What we don't want to do with the engines, and the stations for that matter, is get into a crisis mode where, oh my gosh, we don't have enough apparatus, we've got to go out and get one. Because it's not practical. It takes roughly, if you authorized it November 1, it'd be 18 months to 24 months before we put an engine in service. That's between the build-out, delivery, and outfitting it for use. It's even longer with the ladder truck. We have four trucks, two of those, so half the trucks that we have have exceeded their useful life. And it take, they're more expensive and it takes longer to get them online as well. And I can go down the line. We have brush trucks. They're not in as dire a situation, but we need additional brush trucks. Again, it takes some time to get those turned around and get them online and in a functional state of use. And then we have our light-duty vehicles. And that's just a constant need throughout the city, really, not just the Fire Department. And it would be good, from a policy standpoint, to look at funding that on an ongoing basis for a replacement program. You know, I should give credit to Robert as well because he's been very proactive in bringing up and kicking around ideas to look at these long-term plans to replace apparatus, to replace infrastructure. And so I just want to emphasize that. Because it's not something, I know you're aware of it and staff is aware of it, we're working on it. And so I just want that out there for consideration as we look forward. A non-budget item that I really want to emphasize is the last one, the Expanded Fire Prevention and Community Outreach Program. And I say "non-budget" because what I'm talking about is the other, the non-tangible items, feedback, benefits that we bring to the community. You saw at the last council meeting, the Northern Nevada Children's Cancer Foundation was here, thanking you for enabling us to help them with the fundraiser. You know, we support moms on the run. The MDA, of course, is the big one that the Fire Department supports. That's all because we have a viable, you know, engaged Fire Department. We're reaching out to the community, we're supporting the NABs. We're doing RCI. In fact, the Fire Department's session of that is tonight at Station 11. We have ride-alongs, not only from the community, but from the Community College and some other EMS programs that are around. And we partner with the schools in the area. We go out and we read in the schools. We participate in their fire drills. They come to the stations and experience what it's like, from their perspective, to be a firefighter. And then, one last thing. We talked a little bit in the context of the Police Department about some of those other challenges that we have. We, as a Fire Department, are looking at that as well. I have personally reached out to the Community Health Alliance in Northern Nevada Hopes to see how we can partner with them to address some of the needs in our community that aren't 911. And there's a twofold benefit there. It helps, it addresses a need, whether it's a mental health need, a poverty need, a medical need. We, if we're getting out there and addressing that need, we're meeting a need of the community. But we're also keeping them out of the 911 system, if we're being proactive like that. Because that's what stresses the system. If you can plan to provide that service, it's a lot easier than if you have to respond every time somebody dials 911. And so by doing that, again, we're being proactive, reaching out to the community, and also helping the Fire Department and the system in general. So those would be the policy-level ideas that I would encourage you to consider as you go forward. And I'd be happy to answer any questions. Like I said, I think the staffing is the big one. You've seen what a difference it can make. And going forward, I think, when you look at your budget, that's, of course, what I'm, to be candid, that's what I'll be pushing for as well.
Yeah, so first of all, thank you so much for being incredibly innovative. You are doing a lot of things that are different. And also, I hear it from your men and women. And I just think it keeps them really engaged and loving their jobs. And so, and I think we've seen that with opening the two other fire stations. And so I commend you for getting that done. Because I know that it's never easy. But we all have been under the mindset that it's got to be what's best for the community moving forward. So that's tremendous. And I know you don't have it now, but maybe at some point, looking at those two other stations, how that's going, and also what those numbers are of calls for service and things like that. Because, oh no, I got it right here.
Yeah, actually, I do.
So yeah, if you want to give that to me, that'd be great. Because I'm going to actually speed this up because we have a couple of council members that their time is limited. But I want to say thank you again. It comes down to public safety, making it a priority. And I know what difficult jobs that you have. And so I sincerely appreciate you and all the hard work. But how far we've come from two years ago, or even four years ago, I might add, till today. And so it's changed dramatically.
And just to give you some general numbers, we have about 100 calls a month in those two districts. And those are 100 calls that are getting a priority response from a medical unit right now. And, you know, the medical unit, the EMS calls are the larger priority calls in that area. Which is not to discount the fire, because when you need a fire response, you need it now, right? So.
Absolutely.
We all know that.
Absolutely. I couldn't agree more. All right, Councilman Bobzine.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. And the chief quite masterfully arranged to take me on a tour of the fire site as well as the Command Center ahead of this budget discussion. So kudos to him for getting me teed up on this properly. But just to join you, Madam Mayor, in your commendation to the men and women of the Reno Fire Department and their contribution to this most recent fire. I mean, it really was pretty amazing. We had occasion on-scene to talk with a homeowner who was very thankful for very obvious reasons to the Reno Fire crew that saved his house. I mean, it was, it was pretty amazing to see just how tough it was. And I have photos of one of our rigs that got a little hot at some point, early Friday morning, as they were dealing with sort of initial response, initial attack on this. And so amazing to hear from our one battalion chief on these issues. Couple of takeaways for me from that. The big one was amazing the coordination that the fire services are capable of in these large-scale incidents. And for all of the work that we've put in as a council to ensure that the regional cooperation is as strong as it can be, this definitely showed that, you know, we can work together and we are working together. And so the degree of professionalism was really amazing. Amazing that there were no fatalities from this fire, given how quickly this spread. And if you know the area and some of those neighborhoods down there, man, it was scary to think about trying to get out of there when this thing was moving as fast as it did. Another big takeaway that I think is important for us on a long-term perspective, talking with someone from the Forest Service about this, is, you know, the acknowledgement, we all know this, these seasons are getting longer and longer and longer. I mean, they're normally rotating crews out of here in the middle of October. And here we go. So the needs that Chief Cochran's laying out, certainly the mobile extraction, rapid extrication. Extrication module, thank you. You know, that's a, that's a tool that's useful for wildland. You know, he mentioned the need to, you know, deal with some of their other, the brush rigs and the rest. You know, we're going to have to adjust to the fact that, from a sustainability perspective, again, this is our resiliency work and everything else, that planning's going to feed into, we're going to have to have more resources that are expended dealing with the wildland urban interface because of the climate issues. But then also, as Councilman Brekis would point out, and I think we'd all join her, as we're changing our pattern of development, we have to be very aware that this stuff costs money as we're going further and further out into the fringes. So it's important to us, as a council, to keep track of these fire costs as we're managing our master plan, our interaction with the regional plan update and everything else. And frankly, we're monitoring our relationship with Truck Commanders Fire Protection District. You know, is this the best bang for the buck for the taxpayers? All these factors coming together. And so, I mean, I know that the Department knows this and they're going to help us grapple with these issues for the years to come.
Right. And I think back to your point, I also received great feedback on how well you worked with Truckie Meadows and vice versa. And so that's always really encouraging. And when it comes to fire, obviously, it causes me severe anxiety. Maybe something I'll never get over. But I think, you know, again, a safe city is a very prosperous city. And I will tell you, I was so impressed with your preparedness. How, I mean, you called me, actually, someone from the City Attorney's Office called me and said, we need you to come down here and sign an emergency declaration in case we need it. And when that happens, you know that the situation could get very serious very fast. So I was extremely impressed. And again, I thank you.
Thank you.
Anyway, any Vice Mayor Delgado? And, right, and I'm sorry.
It's okay. Councilman will give you the blow-by-blow with pictures.
Madam Mayor, if I may, I just, you know, I want to echo a little bit. You know, we've come a long way. I remember 2012, the divorce was going on. Then we had, you know, what's the plan when the grant expires? What's the plan when the grant expires? There was no plan for when the grant expired, you know? And now, I feel, you know, and not to take anything away, it's just moving forward is, what's the plan when the lease expires? What's the plan when the lease expires? What's the plan when the lease expires? And I think that needs to be a front-and-center discussion on this budget cycle. Frankly, I would like a set-aside discussion just on capital. You know, show us a number that we can expect on capital and let's go through it, you know? And let's throw in there some regional resources. RTC money if we want to, Tomo money if we want to. I really, we've made so much progress in budgeting. And you've mentioned some of the fleet replacement work that's going on. But I am very concerned about having a fire station that's in a tent on leased property where someone has big plans to do something with their property. So, you know, I'm queuing up the things that I see are really hanging over this budget discussion, and this is one of them.
Madam Mayor, I'll be quick. Chief, in addition to working in healthcare space and other first responders, you guys are up in front dealing with our community when crisis is there, right? And you guys are the ones that apply medicine or healthcare right on the spot more often than not. So I appreciate how you guys are thinking consistently outside of the box and how to deal with some of the issues to keep people out of our healthcare system. Because we know the expense that we all take on from that, the overall burden. So thank you for that. Thank you for consistently thinking about how to retrain and think about even in the hiring process, getting those people that are sometimes the non-traditional skill sets that we have traditionally thought a firefighter or a police officer needed to have. So please continue doing that. The other piece, too, is the outreach. Tremendous amount of outreach. I get tons of compliments all the time, how much outreach you guys do to notify the community about public safety. I mean, their safety within their homes, safety in their neighborhoods, how to, outside of just the fire concept of it, but also just the healthy well-being and what to do in case of emergencies. So thank you for that. And I appreciate what you guys laid out for us here, too, in terms of what your priorities are. So thank you.
Good, thank you for that. It's always good to hear that feedback. Because I know it happens. And like I said on the fire this morning, I always get positive feedback from these fires on my personnel, but I never get tired of hearing it.
Absolutely.
All right, any further questions? Seeing that there are none. Madam Clerk, any public comment? All right.
Next up is Eric Jensen from the Community Development. Will talk about their initiatives. Madam Mayor, members of the council. Mr. Thomas, great to be with you this afternoon. I apologize if I have to refer to my notes frequently during this presentation. I've only been, I've been here less than five months now. And so a lot of these initiatives began prior to my tenure. And so I'm not quite as up to speed to them as probably some of my colleagues are. In brief, as I went through this process, it was apparent to me that, thank you, Robert, that, you know, the Community Development Department essentially interacts with every other department, especially the big five, as we refer to them in particular. When we have an issue, such as downtown recently, our code enforcement officers were there with the Police Department. When we have, we work with the Fire Department on plan review. We work with Public Works and others, again, on plan review and other issues. And so essentially, our staff is mingled or co-mingled with all of these other departments in their daily activities. And so as such a diverse staff, we have a diverse list of initiatives, things that don't necessarily look cohesive, but they are. But again, it's because our department is a little bit of all the other departments, effectively. So as you look at the issues that we have here and that we have before you, the big things we talk about, we talk about blight. We talk about redevelopment. We talk about the master plan. Again, you look at the master plan issue, that one particular issue alone involves every single department in it. And interestingly enough, I was a little bit worried going into this master plan process how the other department heads were going to react. Because part of this process essentially, it doesn't take away their independence, but it incorporates them in a way that's probably never been done before in this city and for that matter, in a lot of communities. And so I've been very pleased, working with my colleagues, how receptive they have been to the process and how willing they have been to work with us on it. I don't want to hit too many points here. I know the time is short. But in particular, again, the big things that we have coming up are the, to complete the master plan, next year to do our Title 18 revisions. Again, that's the land use code. The money's already been allocated for the master plan. We will have to allocate money for Title 18 revisions. You look at some of the other things we're working on, our downtown action plan. Again, that has already been allocated. So it's not an issue budget-wise, it's just something that we need to complete. We don't have a whole lot that's really going to hit the budget next year other than our Title 18 revisions. We're talking about a fire-wildland interface plan possibly next year. We've already lined up a grant, hopefully, to pay for the entire process, other than staff time. So that hopefully won't hit our budget. But it will hit, one of the big critical issues we have is that how do we interact within these wildland areas? Because as we grow as a city, we're starting to bump up against critical lands. And we really don't have anything right now that helps deal with it. And that's one of the reasons why we've had, you know, these fires impact us and why we have these issues, is because we really haven't addressed this issue in the past. So that's one of the things that we hope to address in the upcoming year. Don't have too much more. I'd turn it over to council if you have any questions or thoughts on what we're working on. Or Mr. Thomas, if you want to add something.
Go right ahead.
Just for the council's consideration, I don't know how it will eventually pan out. But we did wrap in the housing workshop that the council had requested and the historic policy or plan, which weren't initially part of the master plan. So there may be some financial costs moving forward. I don't imagine them being significant. But we're working through that, Eric's staff is, to see if in fact that results in a need for resources. But I just wanted to put that on your radar. That is, those are two initiatives that weren't contemplated originally when the master plan was developed. And were efforts that did cost us some. But it's not enough to significantly affect the master plan. But I just wanted to have you ready for that, in case that happens, as a conversation.
Question? Go right ahead.
So I was under the impression that we were doing a consultant study on historic resources. And that there's going to come out of that a proposal around now. In fact, maybe in September, or in October. Could you just tell us where that is? And is it getting wrapped up? And what kind of recommendations they might be having?
Sure. So Mella is coming to town. If you don't know who Mella is. She's highly respected in the community, well, not just our community, but throughout the Western United States for historical preservation. And she will be coming shortly. This fall, we're going to wrap that up, hopefully, and get a report from her with recommendations. But we're very excited about that. In particular, that we hope to be able to gather all of the folks in the community who are interested in the topic and to really come up with some meaningful policy recommendations that this council can adopt, that we can incorporate into the community. community.
Well, and usually new policy recommendations include somebody to manage that or do something with that, and last year, one of my recommendations was that we get at least a half-time historic resources person on staff, because right now, we have a group of volunteers who are feeding input into our planning process, but it's becoming more apparent as we sort of move through our historic, you know, structures, and a lot of them, over time, you know, have been taken down, we're getting to fewer and fewer, so it's kind of, kind of be like your wildland issue, we're kind of hitting the point where it's going to get a little bit challenging. People are going to want to do new stuff, some people want to keep old stuff, we just need, in my opinion, a review process, so each one of these is not a crisis, and especially where we have infill development, you know, we're not kind of wringing our hands, that we actually have done a thorough review, your staff have made recommendations to us, this one's worth saving, this one's going, we've been able to work with a private landowner here, we would recommend that there, but, and I'm not saying it's a full-time job, but it has to be somebody's job, that actually has knowledge in this field, that we're not just tacking it on. Now, I know in Las Vegas, one of the interesting things they do is they have a half-time person that deals with this, and also, they have another job, and that's dealing with, you know, maybe redevelopment or new stuff, and so, you know, it's a different way to maybe conceptualize a position, so I just want you to be clear, I'm not advocating for a full-time position to do this, but either a separate position or contractor could work, as long as they are on contract, and this is what they do for us, but I just, you know, I want to take it away from, we've relied on for the last, I don't know, decade or more, maybe 20 years, on volunteer group of a commission who meets monthly.
Sure.
It's just not, I don't think getting the job done.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Madam Mayor, go right ahead.
You know, I think that in our progression, that Title 18 is really what we've been all talking and looking about, and I think it hits both the growth management and the business component, because it's a hindrance to business, but it's also a hindrance to preservation. I think what my colleague, Ms. Duer, is talking about is really, and some of the department heads, like the chiefs, you know, as growth comes, we want to be ready for it, is standing up a long-range planning division. I think that we need to stand up a long-range planning division, and then within that, decide what the priorities are. Is it an urban interface plan, which is, you know, one sort of plan, is it a historic preservation plan in function? So I think, I think that's what the well-managed growth priority is about, is in your office, having a long-range planning division, and the master plan's going to say what our planning hierarchy is. You'll have topical plans, which I guess is urban interfaces, I'm an advocate that the natural progression is area plans, help us figure out what to do with Verde, help us what to do with north valleys, rather than just be responsive to development issues, and help us look at our neighborhoods, but that's, so that's area-specific, and so that's important, and then your long-range division is also going to help us with this model that Mr. Chisel was speaking about, first of all, which is the, about, I can't recall what he's calling it, the, what are you calling it? The infrastructure services plan revenue and, it's a model, it's a tool.
Yeah, sure.
So I think that, you know, because these are such broad priorities that we've established, it really comes to the implementation of standing up a long-range planning division that's just not reactive to development requests coming into the, on the planning cycle every other month.
Yeah, I see what you're saying, and I just, I want to just make sure that somehow the expertise gets folded, I think you've made a good point, but I just want to make sure the expertise gets folded in there somewhere.
Yeah, thank you.
Councilman Bopson?
And just real quick to wrap this up, to kind of tie it back to the Historical Resources Commission, because I am the liaison, it's not, I would agree with Councilman Breckus, it's not a matter of just giving the HRC a half-time position to do work, it's, I think the idea of the area plans and being able to really dive in on that longer-term level is going to assuage a lot of the concerns that the members of the HRC have, I mean, I've listened to a lot of the conversations, and yes, there's a lot of angst about the projects that come at them, but I think where they really would like to go is to be able to have that broader understanding of what exactly the choices are out on the horizon, rather than a project, rather than a project review type of thing, where there's a process that inserts them at a late stage.
Well, this is what I'm saying, I don't think they should be inserted into the process, I think it's just an in-house thing that we should do, and they should, they could be our advisors and do that prospective, long-range thing, that was my main point, is to kind of separate these functions a little bit.
Yeah.
All right, anything else?
Not for me?
No?
One last question, operationally, on the building side, are we doing well, and on the code side, are we doing well?
Absolutely, on the building side, I received more comments from the, from the private sector, from the public, than I have in any other organization I worked for. We have a fantastic building department, you know, and our business licensing and code enforcement, now as we're restaffing, as we're coming up in levels, we're getting even better, and we're getting more active in the community, so I'm very pleased with that.
Okay, and we'll have a discussion specific about the balances on the, on the building enterprise fund at some future date.
And I would just reiterate, I think code is incredibly important because of the blight issues, but they also sort of go hand in hand, certainly with downtown and other parts of the city, but working with the police department, and again, I don't want to find ourselves in that position like last year, where code and police become an afterthought, so that's something that I know Vice Mayor and I, and Councilwoman Duer, feel very strongly about code enforcement, and certainly, I think, getting extremely aggressive with the motels downtown, because it's code enforcement that really has a lot to do with going in there and sort of, you know, looking at the conditions and making sure that people are not subjected to horrific conditions that we've seen them in the past, so we want to make sure, I mean, I can be, I'm sure.
Such a good point, I mean, about the living conditions, I mean, it's against the code, but they're living like that.
And they're allowing them to do that.
You know, the electrical, the wires, the water, the no GFI, I mean, there's so many violations, and I keep, I will admit, I mean, these are some of the things I see posted on Facebook, I'm like, why, why aren't we citing that owner? Why aren't we having them have to bring this up to code? It's really confusing.
And I just think we get a no tolerance policy in place and just become extremely strict about it, you know, and I know you feel the same way, by the way, I know you haven't been here long, and I always say the mayor hears everything, and I'm hearing great, great things about you.
Oh, thank you, Mayor, I appreciate that.
All right, any other questions from council, seeing that there are none? All right, Madam Clerk, do you have a public comment?
Yes, Madam Mayor, Mike Thornton would like to speak.
You tweet too much for me, I can't respond, I'm not that fast.
I'm sorry.
I'm not that fast.
I'll try to be nice, it's my plan.
No, I'm just saying, I want to respond, but, and also, the characters don't allow me to do enough, but I can't keep up with, can't keep up with you, so I'll want to give you a call.
You know, I'm a big believer in social media and electronic communication, not too much of a Luddite for an old guy.
I thought you did a great job, I did, and I love that you were calling out the payday loan.
Oh, thank you very much, I appreciate that.
Yeah, good job, is what I was getting at, okay, go right ahead.
Okay, Mike Thornton, Executive Director for Action, and thank you, it's been very educational today, listening to all the various things that you have to deal with regarding the budget, particularly, I would also like to, you know, give a big huzzah to the fire department for their hard work and their brave action, and also to our local police as well. I really wanted to come up and just comment on the issue of community development, and particularly as it relates to code enforcement pertaining to the weeklies. We all know that, for the all intents and purposes, these places are slums, the people who have been living in them, some of them for many, many years, have been subjected to substandard and, dare I say, virtually subhuman living conditions, and they need to be cleaned up, and the people who own these buildings need to be responsible for that. My concern, and the concern of many people in the community, is that when code enforcement really begins to enforce living standards at these buildings, what will happen to the people that live there? Because as we all know, for many people, this is the housing of last resort in this community, I am in no way suggesting that code enforcement should not pursue this, but I think we have to really think about what are the unintended consequences when that happens. I think it has been clear in the past that some of the owners of these motels, when pressed, have either passed the cost on to the people who live there, who can barely afford to live there now, and/or have walked away from some of these properties, which means that all of these folks who live in there could very well wind up being added to the already excessive number of people we have who are homeless in this town and in this region. So I just ask that we be smart and make sure that our most vulnerable neighbors, our most vulnerable residents, our most vulnerable citizens, do not wind up bearing the brunt of this activity. Does that make sense what I'm saying?
Absolutely, I think, no, I think you hit the nail on the head, and I think what we have to look at is making the owners absolutely accountable, and them having to pay for additional housing to make sure that they're safe and in environments that are acceptable.
Off the top of my head, that sounds like an excellent idea.
Right, so when we go into crafting something to those standards, it would be great to have you part of the process, so we don't miss anything, but I think, I think that's a huge valid point, because you don't think about the aftermath of that, and I think we saw that with a couple of, you know, of the motels down here, and that's what's really, really difficult, you've got to remember whenever you're closing down these motels for their conditions, and they were deplorable, as you know, and, I mean, I don't think they had taken out those mattresses in, I don't know, 20 years?
It's bad, it's horrendous.
It was horrendous. So I do think we have to hold them accountable and make sure they provide the accommodations if the city comes in there and says, this is just not acceptable, and let's say, you know, they close down 10 units, then they have to, they have to put the burden on to the owner.
Mayor, council members, thank you very much.
Thank you so much, really appreciate it.
Madam Mayor, may I ask you a question as our RSCVA representative?
Yes.
Do these motels pay lodger's tax, do you know that?
No, I think so.
No, and there is a loophole, and actually, that needs to be changed at the legislature, David, do you know a little bit more about that? There's sort of this process, and, and.
Yeah, that happens against the update, because that's kind of like, you're in, you're out.
Right.
But can you be sometimes in and sometimes out?
That's part of the problem.
Right, that's part of the problem, and Roberta Ross and I are going to, she's kind of really involved in that, and so we're going to look at how, how we do that, but we certainly need to look at that aspect of it, because there is a loophole where they are circumventing that tax.
It's in our code, it is considered permanent housing if it's more than 30 days, so anyone that is in housing more than 30 days does not have to pay the room tax or the lodger's tax, whatever you want.
So then they basically lie about it, and that's how they get around.
All right, well, next up is our Parks Department, Andy Bass.
Good afternoon, Mayor, Council, Mr. Thomas, Andy Bass, Director of Parks Recreation and Community Services, for the record. To dive into what we are, our four initiatives that we have currently for this year, our first one that we have is Releaf Reno, this was an initiative that was spearheaded and led by Councilmember Duer, and it's been going really well. Our initial goal was to raise $100,000 in the first year, that equates to $10,000 being donated last budget cycle, and with the target of trying to raise $90,000 this year. We are well on our way, and feel very comfortable that we will at least meet and possibly even exceed that. In terms of budget priority, it's not currently included in the budget, but obviously, we will be doing community fundraising for that project. The next initiative is our tree management plan, that was completed in the 15, 16 year, and this year, we're working on implementing that plan, and some of the things that we'll be doing to implement it is updating our urban forestry website, add our tree maps to the website, develop a block pruning grid, and those things will help us to start to implement the tree management plan. Our third initiative is to improve the park maintenance, we have set standards that we follow our best practices for maintaining our parks to keep them safe, and also, most importantly, will lead to keeping them sustainable. Currently, we have, we do self-evaluations, inspections of our parks, and currently, 48.1% of our inspections actually meet our standards, which, of course, we would love to say we meet them 100% of the time, that's the ultimate goal, but basically, we're doing the best we can with what we have, and our goal this year is to increase that to 50% of our parks meeting our standards. So of course, this is one of our major focuses this year, and will be next year. Our final initiative for this year is to enhance our trail system, and this relates to the former North Gate Golf Course, or the new Sierra Vista Park, we did receive a grant to build the perimeter trail, which will be create a loop trail system in that park, and we plan on building, starting construction this spring, and when it's completed, that will allow us to open up that site to the public, so that is, that's going to be a major enhancement to the Northwest Trail System as we start to work on that park. It's good for trail running, too. Going into next year, like I said earlier, improve park maintenance, that is one of our top initiatives, the only way we can do it is with resources, whether that be with people or with the resources to contract out and get people doing, doing more work. Our second initiative is to maintain and improve our recreational facilities, this is closely tied to our CIP budgeting process, and it needs great help, as we've seen from the past two years, we have had major closures of two of our pools, and it is crushing to the recreational programming when it comes to aquatics, so we would like to get to a point where we're making the capital improvements preventative, maintenance, as well as preventative replacements, so that would also be one that we would, we are looking for. The next one is the volunteer program, we recently updated you on the volunteer program, we have created a action plan, and so our focus is to make sure that we implement the action plan. Our goal is, is we know that resources are slow to come to us, and so we are not going to sit here and wait for those resources to come, we're trying to find other ways to get our job done, and to meet the needs of the residents, and we see the volunteer program as being a very key piece to that, and it's our hope that we'll be accredited, and we'll have the best volunteer program in the Truckee Meadows. Finally, our next one is more of an internal one, to improve our communication, but also our training opportunities, and I just want you to note that we are not asking for additional money, we are being creative in this, we are reaching out to our retired other professionals in the region, and they're coming, a good example is, we just did a customer service training for over 200 of our staff members, we reached out to, as council is aware, for the past two years, there has been a city staff survey, and for Parks and Recreation, our top two, I'm sure with the whole city, is communication and training, so we've started a communication committee, we've implemented two of their, their ideas, and we're getting positive feedback there, professional in Fallon, who runs the hospitality program at the Naval Air Station, he came and he trained our staff, and it just cost me a lunch, so we are looking for those who are willing, and there's a lot of people willing, to come and to give us training, and so that's our plan, we have a two-year plan, we went to each of our divisions, and we asked them specifically, you said you want training, now tell us what training you actually want, so we have, we wrote it all down, we are just about finished with the first year, and we'll finish up the second year, and again, this is, at this point, it's only cost a lunch, so trying to be creative there.
We like it, we like it.
And then finally, is, we are focused on our right-of-way tree planting, this is part of our tree management plan, and also the releaf program. We are working with Tomwa, as some of you know that we got a grant for turf reduction program, we have gained their permission to slightly tweak that grant proposal, and we are actually in the process now of developing four conceptual plans that will demonstrate how you can actually use low-water plantings and trees in your right-of-way in front of your house, so we will have four conceptual designs, and then we'll go through kind of a granting process where those designs can be implemented throughout the community as kind of a showcase for other members of the community, and again, this is through a grant of about $82,000, so with that, I'll answer any questions.
All right, any questions, Councilman Breckus?
So prior to the downturn, how, where were we on our meeting our park maintenance goals? Were we 100%?
And I'll look at Jeff Mann.
I know it's been.
We're at 90%.
We were at 90, so the story, just like public safety personnel, we measured a little different than for you guys, you know, your department.
There's our, there's a ton of national standards, and I could get up here, and I can give you all sorts of different standards, basically, the thing to take away is, our department is still in the depth of the reception.
Sure.
We've, we have only added two nine-month positions, so we are still, you know, operating We've, we have only added two nine-month positions. So we are still, you know, operating and functioning, you know, from the budget cuts.
We've only added two nine-months? Two? That's all we've added?
Correct.
I thought we'd added more since I've been on.
That is it.
Okay. I mean, I guess I'll be looking when we have that capital budget discussion because the, the parks are looking pretty shabby in a lot of ways. People bring out, in particular, parks to me and, you know, say, you know, it used to be this or that. Now it's just getting a lot more comments of the overall appearance of this one or that one. And, and it is of concern. Are there any resources that you're looking to that we can use to augment our budget? We have the residential construction tax. We can use that in a limited manner. Talked about CDBG for access. Anything, I mean, you're always going after grants.
We're always looking for grants. A lot of the grants are planning grants or for new construction. I mean, our, our main issue is in the day-to-day operations, typically, our park, our park maintainers have anywhere from eight to 12 parks that they're responsible for each day. So, I mean, just doing the math on, you know, an eight-hour shift, there's just only so much time you can spend in a park. And we focus on the most important aspects, the safety, the cleanliness of the park. So the cleaning restrooms, emptying garbage, doing quick inspections. And, and that's leaving us open to a lot of the comments you're having. But the staff is working extremely hard. You know, they are, they are definitely doing all that they can to, to make it as, as best they can.
And the recreational programming side, it seems like we've augmented that over the last couple of years. Are we just standing level?
We are, we are maintaining where we're at. We're not necessarily expanding. We are expanding in the senior. And there's been some resources through the Senior Citizen Advisory Committee that allows that to happen. But we are, we're focused on trying to make our, our facilities the best they can be, inviting and working through that aspect.
Okay.
Just, just a kudos. I really appreciate, and I think the whole council does, what you guys have done in sort of embracing the Tree Management Plan and the Re-Leaf Reno. We're just starting to see, you know, we've been focused the last few months on collecting money. And we do have a project coming up this next Saturday to plant 25 trees. And what a collaborative project. I mean, we have double-dime a master association donating $10,000. They're getting back in kind. We have Mercury Momentum, who puts on the Earth Day for Reno, last five years, bringing in volunteers. We have, you know-
National Landscape Company is donating a lot of work.
National Landscape Company donating in-kind services. And there's like three other-
The Soil Company, there's a lot of people-
Soil Company donating. So I mean, it's, it's the kind of thing. And when we were putting this together, I mean, people from all over the city were saying, we'd like to do something similar. And I think it's all to the good, you know, building these partnerships, leveraging the dollars. So I just, I appreciate what you guys have done. And I, I think it's, you know, it's, it's starting to find its own. I also want to mention that the mayor shared a grant opportunity, which to me was a priority, potentially quote-unquote "releafing" the Plum Lane entrance to the airport. And, you know, we're kicking that around as a possible idea for submitting this grant. That might fall into next year's budget. You know, it'd probably require a match. I don't know all the details about that grant. But I, I think it would, they wanted a place that was a significant place in our community to add a green space, to incorporate kids. You have Wooster High School there. There was just so many things about it that it might be a good project, and it might be some, you know, a little showpiece in our budget to deal with blight and to, you know, hit on a number of objectives, I guess I'm saying. So.
We'd be very excited to take that project on. That would be, that'd be fun.
All right. Anything else? No? All right. Good job. It's hard to do. Everyone is, you know, I, I'll get letters from dog poop to watering to-
I know.
So I don't, you don't have an easy job.
The dog.
And then you get very passionate about it. So thank you, Andy. Good job. All right, you're up next, Mr. Flansburgh.
All right.
Just really quickly, Madam Clerk, any public comment?
None, Madam Mayor.
Okay.
Last but not least.
All right, here we go.
For the record, John Flansburgh, Director of Public Works. The strategic initiatives that we're working on, as you can imagine, a majority of ours are in vibrant neighborhoods and public places. Our first one is our Continue the Neighborhood Street Improvement Program. This program is only, at this time, only about three, three and a half million dollars a year. We've got a little bit more this current year because we held a little bit back last year, just not knowing how the bridge was going to turn out. What I, and although I'm excited for any money that we have going into Neighborhood Street Program, I guess what I'm very excited about is during the downturn, we did an accelerated program where we bonded out for 10 years, had a medium-term obligation. That medium-term obligation will, final payment will be in 2019. So beginning the following year, we'll be able to do nine to 10 million a year in this program. So it'll triple that. So that's, that's a big, that's a big deal for us. In addition to that, we, we're excited for any opportunities as we do now, but in future, when we can combine sewer replacement with street program, rehabilitations all at one time. And then we, we can really stretch our dollars well that way. However, a needs analysis I completed last year shows that we actually need about 15 million a year. And that's about, so that's about the deficit we're running is. We have, we will have 10 million a year, starting in 2020. We're really looking to need somewhere around 15, 16 million per year. The next one is to continue the pedestrian safety initiatives. And this one's been exciting. And it's been nice because these are things that we can see. And we've been able to include many of you into those types of programs, whether it was putting in a new crosswalk, whether it was putting in speed radar signs, refreshing school zones. Those are all exciting and have been good programs for us. But one of the things that you don't see as much has been all the sidewalk we've been able to go through and catch up on backlog we had of, of areas that we knew that needed to be replaced. And so that's been, that's been working well. However, in what I foresee coming up in the, in the next budget priority, we still have a backlog of about 350,000 in sidewalk repairs that have come in just since May. So those are ones, so we do see that, that need out there. And we are looking, we would like to get to a point where we can actually not just react to things coming in, but actually go out and seek and prioritize the things that we, that we are able to find out in the field. Finally, or the next one, is our traffic signal system, signal optimization. And I have a short video I want to show, just to give you an idea of what this actually looks like. So this is a, was put together by UNR. They, they do the optimization for us. And go ahead and start that. You can probably turn the music down a little bit. I didn't pick the music. But this is actually going northbound on Virginia Street, starting at Gentry Way and ending up at Mount Rose. And so if you look at, here's before and after, it'll split the screen. So what you're looking at the top is before signals optimization, and the bottom is afterwards. So traveling the same corridor during the same time of day, relatively same type of traffic, but just with, with timing without. So far, it looks about the same from Gentry going north. As you, as you approach, coming up, you know, past the Pepper Mill, you're fine. As you get close to Plum Lane, we've got the signal there at El Pollo Loco. And afterwards, we blow right through because we got it timed well. But before, we had to stop. So you see the stop on the top, and now you're seeing how you're a little farther behind. The after on the bottom is working pretty well. You kind of get into the Plum Lane section, you slow down a little bit, but the signals were timed well enough that it got you through. You really didn't have to come to a complete stop. Although, on the top, you're coming to that intersection and you're stopped. Again, just kind of a fun way to show it and to really show what it means when we can go through and look at these signals. From the bottom, we closed out at Mount Rose, 2 minutes, 25 seconds. And in the before scenario on top, we're still waiting for that light to turn. And so we can get going with those cars. But again, a good way to show and to give you an idea, you know, it was only two stops out of all those signals, but it cost you that much time. So, again, on the top, going through, we'll come up into the Mount Rose Street. And as we come up to Mount Rose Street, as we cross over, that's the end of the timing. The time will stop. You've got three, almost four minutes versus 2 minutes, 25 seconds. So, thank you. So, and I think anytime we can show the before and after like that, it really brings it home what it is that we're trying to accomplish. The next item we have is, under strong financial condition, is developing the short-term and long-term infrastructure maintenance. I'm going to talk about sewers first. In 2009, we had over $300 million in backlog sewer projects. We went through, there was a decision made. We, we increased the rate. And since that time, we've been able to do a lot of work, especially out at Tumwaw. If we had a lot of the aging electrical, we had the emergency out there. Thank goodness, we were in time for how we could make that happen and not have any other dire consequences. We've been able to do a lot of work in our collection system. And going forward, we have about 20 million a year. Again, pay-as-you-go as opposed to bonding. And we're seeing a lot of growth coming in. And the growth coming in is also adding a lot of connection fees. So we are actually anticipating that 20 million growing to about 28 million with the addition of the collection fee, or the connection fees going forward. In streets, I talked about that a little bit in the Neighborhood Street Program, how we have, you know, we're, we're looking about 10 million coming in. So, so you're familiar with kind of what we're looking at in our terms of needs and what we have. It's facilities that really is the, is the key. So in 2015, January 2015, we updated our facility condition analysis reports. We had 13 million at that time in Priority One and Two for our 45 occupied buildings. Now, that's not all of our buildings. It's just the occupied ones. That's fire stations. That's the police headquarters. And these One and Two priorities, those are things that need to be done either immediately or in the next couple, two, three years as, as we're, as we're looking at it. In addition to the 13 million, we had six and a half million that was, of work needed to be done at the National Building Stadium, Reno Event Center, and Ballroom. The good news is those, those facilities are being covered by the $2 surcharge. And so we are able to move forward and, and, and make those improvements, as well as other improvements that we have under contract. You're, you're all aware of the Ablemont Northeast Community Center, the roof issue that we had this year. We had to shut the pool down. We're still working through the design to move that one forward. I think that, as you've heard from, I think everyone but Community Development, the issue that came up was facilities. It was the police headquarters. It was fires, stations that they have. It was parks, facilities that they operate out of. And again, it's the other general facilities that we have as well. I didn't talk about the 114 unoccupied buildings. When we talk about unoccupied buildings, it could be anything from a shelter, a park, restrooms at a park, other, other ones that we just don't have people housed or, or operating out of on a daily basis. But we also have a great needs there. And we haven't even calculated what that amount is at this point. We'll try to bring back the number to you so we have a general idea what those are. We're really focusing in on our most critical need, which is the occupied buildings. And that brings us to the department initiatives. The first one is allocating resources to address our aging facilities and buildings. And that, really, you've heard that from all, from four of the groups. And Community Development, we, we have needs for them for expansion that we're looking at in their current building. Going to the next one is Thriving Downtown University District. It's allocating resources to address the parking program. I do have a overhead. Okay, so these are calls for service to Reno Direct. Now, you hear a lot about abandoned vehicles, and it says RPD, but actually, the parking enforcement, they handle a lot of that call for service going out and, and making, when, when the tow companies come, they need to be there as part, when, when they pick them up. And that takes, that's a time-intensive thing. As you see the different calls for service over the last four years, and 2016, by the way, is just through the first nine months. You can see with the, how that gray, the lighter gray bar on the bottom, that's, that's the one for abandoned vehicles from 2380 to 3670 through the first nine months. I don't know why we have so many abandoned vehicles. I don't know why those calls for service are up there so high. I mean, it's, it's crazy to me.
You know what I think it is? I went along a ride-along, and someone had had a vehicle towed in an apartment complex. And, and I think it's, it's towing in apartment complexes. I, you know, I, I do, I think, I think we need to be, I, someone needs to get it down, drill down on that data. Because I've been asking that for several years. And that was, that was a surprise to me. It's towing. You know, towing, towing is, towing is marked somehow as abandoned vehicles. And so maybe we go to the tow companies because we've got to have, don't they have to go through a process to tell us when they tow? Does anyone know anything about towing?
We, well, we, when we identify these, then we actually go and, and call, there's a, there's a rotation of the towing companies-
Sure.
-for them to come and do the tow-
Yeah.
-when it's been, when it's past its time.
Let's figure out how, I think it's towing.
Yeah, we'll, we'll go back and analyze it in a little more depth to see how we can distinguish amongst the calls.
Yeah. I mean, I know in Ward One, Summit Ridge, it's like every abandoned vehicle, Joy Riders dumping cars in Summit Ridge is one way to interpret the data. At one point, I realized it's just apartments getting towed, which is not a good thing, you know. But I don't hear a lot of tow complaints, but anyway.
So we'll go back to the presentation. To give you an idea, we have three parking enforcement officers. One of the parking, one, it's more than one FTE just taking care of the abandoned vehicles. So that, that, I mean, so for only the three, and that's why we're looking at resources. We also would be looking to replace the remaining coin-only meters in our metered locations. But those, those are some, some of the things that we would, that we would recommend. The ADA Transition Plan, number, next one, update the city, the city's ADA Transition Plan of City Facilities and City Right-of-Way. There is a 2011 RTC Plan for Reno Sparks by COMPED. There's also an ADA Plan that was completed in May of 2013 with Parks and Rec. We're, we're just looking to update those and then to go out and do a little more identification of where we have some of those issues. So we can bring back a plan of how to make those corrections. And then the last one on the list here is a Bridge Inspection Maintenance Program. We do receive bridge inspections. Those are done by the Department of Transportation. We, it's not like we don't get them. We get maintenance. We go out and do the maintenance. We're getting to a critical point at this, at this time where we just, there's items that we can do in-house, and there's items that we're going to need to contract out. So we're setting aside some funding in our street fund for the bridge inspection maintenance to do smaller contracts of the maintenance. But we also are going to have a need coming up for larger repairs on some of our bridge structures and replacements. Obviously, the Virginia Street Bridge, good example of, of, you know, creating a great public platform, if you will. And we've seen the benefits of that. But we have Arlington Bridge, we have Sierra Bridge that are going to need work. And we will obviously work with all of our community partners on how best to address all those. And that's, that's my report.
All right. Any other questions?
I'm really excited to see the Bridge Inspection Maintenance Program. I, I hate to see it bled out of our street program, which I think is inadequate. I think we need to earmark it as a ongoing need from RTC money. But I had a half-inch-thick of back Keystone Avenue Bridge repair reports on my desk for a good part of the year because it didn't look like, it looked like it'd been a forgotten child. That was really disconcerting to me. I think during the course of the year, the council asked for a couple initiatives here. One was standing up a stormwater utility. And there was some analysis done. It was, we don't need any stormwater utility. I just, I just don't know that that is not where we need to be directing ourselves because it's coming out of our sewer, and we seem short on there. And even though we've made progress.
It is coming out of the sewer, and we, but we are also funding storm drain projects. And part of that rate that comes in is for storm drain. So I mean, it's, it's, it's no different than Sparks. They, they identify how much of that rate is, is for stormwater.
Okay.
But it's, but we, you know, that whole rate's there. If we were to stand up a stormwater utility, we would be reducing our, our sewer costs by a proportionate amount, or as we programmed for what we were looking to use that, use that for.
Maybe then I just have a problem with the equitable way in which we're funding stormwater. Because I see it coming out of household sewer bills when I see stormwater runoff coming from impervious sites that are mostly non-residential. So I have a real equity problem when I've been hearing about sewer rates hikes to our homeowners for so many, you know, years now.
And, and if I may, the, one of the reasons why we didn't recommend was the, the cost of administration, of determining what, how to make those changes, and then administering that on an annual basis was going to be so expensive that it would actually end up probably just doing a net gain. And we'd have to charge more to cover that part of the program as well as the rest.
Yeah, but our auditor, our Corps of Services auditor recommended we do it. So I don't know. Maybe it's a lift to get it up.
Yeah.
But I don't know. It's, and the other one that I feel in the public works, and maybe it's a catch-all, is the parking division. I think we do need to look at models of standing up a parking division that could run net neutral. And I mean, I've got out in Patagonia area, I have residents out there wanting a residential parking program impacted. I think we can't ignore that we have parking issues bubbling up all over. And in a way, in some places, it's a good thing. It shows, it shows a, in a concentration of activity and energy.
Yeah. Quick question to, to you. So often when you do public works-type measures, you're looking at metrics, right? Like what do we do per this? And one metric that I didn't want the city council to miss, that was in your department, was the huge improvement in water quality in- was the huge improvement in water quality in Virginia Lake. And just to repeat it, we went from a half a foot of visibility when you started, to four and a half feet of visibility month to month, June to June. And to, to have four feet of clarity in one year, because of the recirculation system that we put in, some storm drain improvements, and of course, some extra water. I think these kind of metrics help us understand why we're doing all these projects. And the last thing is, I can't help but say, if Neoma was here, she'd talk about pedestrian crossings. I do pray and hope that when we put in the gates and the garage, that we could reface the inside of the elevators. And I don't want to sound like a broken record, but I just, I don't want to be, when the budget comes, I don't want to even, it to even be on the budget. I want it to be already done, I hope. So, thanks.
All right. That's it?
All right, thank you.
Thank you so much.
Do you have any public comment?
We have none, Madam Mayor.
All right.
Okay, we're at the end. I know this has been a long time. We highlighted the departments that were in the strategic plan that had initiatives as the main point for those initiatives. That does not mean that the other departments are not important, of course. They work on a lot of these initiatives. These initiatives aren't done just by one department, it is a team effort. So the other departments are not forgotten, but we wanted to begin this process with you with the strategic plan. Those departments that were not included, of course, and the departments included may submit additional P C Rs. We did show the priorities based on the strategic plan for F Y 17, and what the proposed ones were for F Y 18. There may be other additional priorities you may show, but this is where we need your input. And what I'm showing up on the screen, and maybe you could zoom out a little, is what our plan to do is to send out to you a survey that will show, maybe I probably should do it.
Zoom out or zoom in?
Yeah. Well, it, it just shows a survey of what your priorities are going to be. And so what we have here is a list of about 40 items that you were shown today that had budget impacts for fiscal year 18. And what we're asking you to do is identify five to 10 that you feel are your priorities. There will also be additional space for additional subject strategic priorities that you feel we may have left out, or we should include. And that will be in the second question. And our intent is to compile that from you, the council, and bring it back to you as a compiled information for then you to approve, so that we can push that out and disseminate that out to the departments as they develop their budget. We would also appreciate your feedback as to how this process is going. Again, this is a new process we're implementing for the budget this year. So if you have any thoughts or comments on what you liked and didn't like, try to be nice and don't hurt our feelings too much, but we would appreciate your feedback and tell us how you think we could do it better. So that is really the conclusion of our presentation. We will be sending this out to you tomorrow morning, and be looking for input. If you have any questions or want additional information, of course, City Manager Bill Thomas would be able to answer those to you, and would be happy to help you out in any way as we go forward.
All right. Go right ahead, Mr. Bill Thomas.
So clearly, based on the conversation today, there's a, a lot more information you will be looking for and could be provided to you as you look at these, I don't know if I counted them right, but 20, 24 plus.
Forty-one.
Forty-one, okay, see. That's why he does the budget and I don't. So 41 different items to choose from in terms of prioritizing. This is a process, a new process we're doing differently and early. So it's not expected that, as you do this prioritization, you have to know all the details in terms of funding, number of people, things like that. It's really about understanding the concept of the program. And that's where, as Robert said, if it's unclear to you as you make your prioritization what exactly some of these are, please let me know, and we'll make sure that the proper staff sit down with you and talk about what is the concept. They may not have the numbers, to say it means six people. They generally will probably have an order of magnitude to give you kind of a sense. But the idea was to get it basically refined a little bit, so when we come back to you, our conversation's a little more focused, and we thought it'd be more productive than sitting in a public meeting going through 40-some items. So that's why we're suggesting this process.
And just because something is prioritized high, if it, let's say, you know, I'm not sure I have a good example, but if something is, is $100 million impact, it may not get done. And the reverse may actually occur. Something that may not have a huge budget impact as we go along, that was not prioritized high, may, because it wasn't a large cost item, may be swept in. So, but this will help guide our departments and help guide the finance department as we create the budget for you, and hopefully be more responsive to the council.
Quick question on this. First, just, may I?
Yeah, go right ahead, of course.
Just, kudos, this was just, whoa, way better. I mean, this is so helpful, just to get this kind of snapshot at this point, so our council priorities can get folded in, instead of you reacting to them and saying, what do you want me to cut? I mean, what a change of dynamic. And number two, it was on high, medium, low, but it was what you just, you were just mentioning right at the end there, about the process, and you want us to send in our priorities.
Yeah, we are going to send you the survey, and this is kind of a snapshot of the survey.
I got that.
And we'll ask for you to fill out, identify five to 10.
Yeah.
So if you have five, that's great. If you have 10, that's great. If you have seven, that's great. We're giving you, you know, depending on what you think are the most important. And then we're also giving you the opportunity to add additional strategic priorities down at the bottom. We, you know, if you have additional ones, you can put them there. And what I was saying is, just because something becomes the highest priority, if everyone writes in, you know, build a new San Francisco 49ers football stadium, sorry, timely, it would, that may not be in the budget, and that, so.
I'm sorry, I just had a, a brain fade there. But what I was going to ask was, so last year, we set aside the Blight Fund, a million dollars.
Yes.
What I, I assume we're still walking off that million dollars, and what you're telling us here is, you're not proposing at this moment to add more money. I mean, Blight was on somebody's list, but I think it was continue working through, not...
Yes.
So I just wanted to make sure I understood that. So I didn't write, like, Blight down on my thing.
That is correct.
Still there, we're still working on it.
Well, some of it has been expended.
Right.
For the demolition of the motels, or some big bellies purchased, and some other ancillary.
What, would you say we have 50% of it left?
I believe, do you have?
Yeah, I think, I think it's more than 50%. I think using that, that analogy, what would be important to us is the Blight Fund, which was a unique funding that we did one time.
Right.
Would be a question of whether or not the council thinks it's a priority to continue to fund some part of it. Maybe it's not a million dollars every year, but is there a council interest in ongoing funding for Blight? That would be the kind of information that would be helpful coming out of this.
Okay.
And then we'll go back and sort out, what do we mean by how much money, where would it go, things like that.
I think rather than calling it, you know, initiative to, you know, hit Blight is, you know, that's so broad, so that can be, I, I, we had people coming for, you know, this or that. We had someone who said Hillside Cemetery. So, you know, let's maybe try and break that down. I think we also need to jump off of that 10.9 surplus, because it's getting, it's going so far back in budgeting history, because it was like two budget cycles ago. I, I will always contend that it was not a budget surplus, it was a missed budget, because that was the budget where there was projections that we were not going to be able to maintain the certain firefighters, and then that budget grew, and it was a time where the economy did make that most jump, but it, it never was a surplus. It was really a missed budget projection, in, in how I've looked at it. And, and Mr. Klinger at the time said he felt, you know, when your economy's running, going strong, your projections jump faster and it's harder, and I, you know, you know, be it was, as it was, there was an explanation for it. But let's, let's call it something different, maybe unfinished projects, because there's money earmarked, you know, ongoing annual projects with earmarks. So it's the fire station or something.
And we, the finance department will be preparing a memo on the status of the 10.9 million dollar projects, maybe.
Okay.
There is 850,000 in that Blight Fund. That was a separate fund set up for Blight, so.
How much is that?
But, yeah, 850, but not all the demo has been expended for.
Oh, okay.
So, some of it, you know, the, these are the actual expenditures, so.
Yeah.
So, yeah, it's there.
So maybe 875, so, I mean, you, so we've spent about 25% of it, we have 75, and what we're just saying is, going forward, my question was, knowing that's very helpful, because that tells me, carry on, not necessarily add to, unless we want a continually rotating million, you know, like, maybe add 250, so that there's always a million dollars of projects ahead of us. I mean, it's a different kind of idea, I guess.
And, and there has been discussion in terms of the, the program, you know, those funds. It has and not just been a, a fund to, to reach from. 250,000 of that was for specifically to be retained within demolition purposes.
Right.
Across the city, so that's, that's already cut 250 off of that. 250 was allocated for downtown, so that's half of that. 275 of that was supposed to be, as my understanding, community development's still working on the programming of the neighborhood renewal program, and which, getting nods from our community development director there, is, hopefully, should be getting some there. And the remainder should be going towards neighborhood cleanups, belly, the purchase of belly compactors, the dumpsters, et cetera, et cetera. So there has been programming for that million dollars.
Oh, absolutely. I just wondered, did we need to add to it, you know, as we expended, per the plan? Do we need to add, you know, into next year?
The idea also with the downtown piece is, once those funds are replenished, they can be used for the downtown piece, so that's hopefully, sooner than later, there'll be an opportunity for downtown to use 250,000 for Blight reduction in the downtown area. But I think it'd be great for us to, if the opportunity's there, to have more funds added on to enhance current programming of the Blight Initiative. In addition to just the overall programming of the 250 that's across the city, Blight reductions for demolition opportunities, that would also have to be paid back in.
But if I may, I mean, you say, well, it's the belly contract, the, you know, the big belly garbage can, let's say garbage cans, or cleanups, you know? Let, let's, let's call it, hey, next year going forward, do we want to do cleanups at, you know, added number? And do that, and so it's, it's more targeted, so we can go up. But on another note, along the same lines, that 10.9 surplus that we don't want to call surplus, how much of that is remaining? Because some fixed the roof, some fixed, bought the garage.
While they're looking that up, one of the things I think we, we heard very clearly this, this afternoon, and I would look to Robert on, is whether we can maybe fine-tune the survey to break out either some subcategories in Blight, based on the conversation here.
So it's not just one lump sum, but maybe we understand, just as Oscar laid out, what the main goals were there, maybe those become their own initiatives. Is that what you're saying?
Right. So we can, because the money was used in multiple ways, getting back to Council and Breckins's point, is all Blight is not the same. Maybe break that down, so there's discernible differences between where the money could go.
Well, allows you also to think ongoing, because he's talking about a program for neighborhood revitalization.
Oh, yeah.
So that's then, in the future, it can compete each year. But how, how much is left of that 2.9?
4.2 million.
Okay.
Pretty much, well, as you know, just kind of going through real quickly, the city hall elevator has about 450,000 left over. There were a number of parks programs that have, had a few dollars left over. There was the Northeast Community Center floor, which was 47,000. The Northeast Community Center roof, which was short, as we talked about earlier. There is the security system, there's about 140,000 left, but those, that'll be expended with the new badge system. The city hall garage has about 750,000. Pedestrian safety bike lane projects has about 84. The fire station has the 400,000 in the old road. Park lights, it was, has 150,000. The C A C project was complete. R P D headquarters has money in there, but there's encumbrances for architectures of about 100,000, and some projects that are coming forward. And then the Blight mitigation we talked about.
So fire station and police station are in there. Okay. With that, I have to break coram.
Well, and so does Oscar, so just really quickly. I, I thank you so much. I, I love this process. It was, I think it was really beneficial, because we're going to have much more conversation more before, it kind of gets handed to you, and here you go, and live with it. So this, this year, and you have two weeks to decide, and, and so I thank you so much for, for making this much easier. Really quickly, Ryan, hi, I apologize, because I had to leave the room, but I just want to say thank you for all the work that you've done on Reimagine Reno. So, good job. But I also want to point out that tomorrow, I just received notice from a group that is giving Maureen McKissick a big award for exceptional creative public participation with Reimagine Reno. And, and so I, I want to give a huge shout-out to her, and also Deanna Gishneider in that department, because the response was phenomenal. It was phenomenal. And so I just want to, I wanted everyone to know that, because I feel like a proud mom. So, anyway. All right, with that being said, may I get a motion?
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, any public comment?
We have none.
We have none? All right, seeing that there are none, second, and all those in favor?
We're in favor.
There we go.
Did it.
Huge.
Oh, yeah.
Good, smash me, Nicky.
Boom.